All right. That's the last time I get to do that. Calling the, this June, actually it's the annual meeting of the AMSA Board of Trustees. So we do do this once a year where we do go through SLADE. We have a more full review of what has to happen. So our agenda this evening, oh, what time is it? 6:43 that I'm starting, okay? And the meeting is being videotaped. So our agenda this evening, we'll go through our standard opening items, look to approve the minutes, we'll get our stakeholder update reports, we have our ED report, and then the one we've all been waiting for, our department chair presentation this month is actually from our history department chair. Other chair business, we've got update from the ED evaluation task force, family and faculty survey results, we'll talk about those, and then we will discuss committee and task force participation for the next year because all the committee memberships sort of expire at the end of the year. Governance is going to be presenting an update and also nominating officers for the year and trustee nominations. We have an ed committee year-end presentation, finance update, development committee update, and then we will be going into executive session to talk about litigation strategies and consider the purchase and lease of real property because doing so in open session would be detrimental to our position. Is there any other, anything else to add to the, and we will not be reconvening. Anything else to add to the agenda? I'm actually going to re, to move things around just a little bit, and let's do our trustee nomination first, usually when we have a new trustee nomination, we do that upfront.
Certainly. The governance committee would like to nominate Kristen as a trustee.
Kristen Carney. So Kristen, can you come up and just give a brief statement, and then people who have not had a chance to meet Kristen certainly have an opportunity to ask some questions.
Hi, everyone. I'm excited to be here and receive this nomination tonight. I've been watching AMSA for a long time. I have friends whose kids go here, so I've witnessed the performance and excellence that comes out of this school, as well as obviously all the public press and whatnot. It's a great institution. I have been watching through some of the more challenging periods and I've been really impressed with the results that have come from all of the hard work through the faculty, the students, the parents, and everyone on the school has really put forth a lot of care and personal interest in the outcome of all the students here. And I think it's a real amazing attestation to how fabulous the organization is, right from the core all the way up through the folks that are in this room today. So I would love to be a part of the organization. I have a very strong finance background, more than 20 years, I'd say, of experience in broad-based financial institutions, from audit to forecasting to accounting, and I'm looking forward to be able to share some of that with everyone here and staff as well. So if anyone has any questions, be happy to take them. I've met most of you either now or over the years.
No questions? Okay. Then I would entertain a motion to vote, to approve, accepting Kristen as a trustee.
I'd like to make the motion to approve Kristen Carney as a trustee of the board for a term of three years.
Right. So it'd be from July 1st, 2018 until June 30th, 2021. I second. Liz second? Lucy second. Oh, yes. I just realized because we do have Raul on the phone due to distance, we are going to have to do this vote by roll call vote.
Lucy second.
Lucy second, yeah. So, Jean?
Yes.
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 Raul?
Here.
All right. Congratulations. Thank you. So Kristen, you're welcome to join us. Right in the front, and Ken is not here today, so you can just sit there.
It's not totally a coincidence?
No, it doesn't, but you know. All right. So, you can watch when they do. Let's look at the minutes. Now I have to slide back. And how amazing is this, that these came out a full week in advance, so everybody had time to read these, right?
Can I ask, did anybody have, how should I put it, in the least embarrassing? Did anyone?
Be careful how you phrase this.
Me too.
Was anybody unable to get to them?
I, oh, there you go.
Yes, I was unable to get to them because for some reason, and Sarah and I figured out this this morning, but somehow my email got switched on Board on Track, so I've been unable to log into Board on Track, and I kept trying, and finally this morning I sent a note to Sarah. So, no, I'm sorry, I did not read them, but I will read them now.
There we go.
So you're ready for a motion?
Yeah. So ready for a motion?
So we'll accept the minutes as written.
I second. Chris made the motion, she seconded. All in favor, we gotta do roll call vote again. So we'll start on this side again.
Yes.
Yes.
I'll abstain because I wasn't here.
Okay, yep. Yes. Yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Raul?
Here.
Okay, there we go. So that motion passes unanimously. All right. I don't believe there's any public comment, but I'll check, so why don't we go ahead and see our faculty press?
Sure. All right. A little bit of a longer update, but I have good, specific things from teachers that I solicited, so hopefully a little more interesting. So naturally, we're at the end of the year, so we have a lot of our end-of-the-year events. So we had graduation on June 8th, which is always a little bittersweet as we send off the students that have been here for seven years, and a lot of us have worked with them for almost that long or for several years. And it was, I know many of you were there, but it was a lovely ceremony, and some of the student shirts and other speakers shared some very personal speeches, which was really touching to hear, and especially I think this is one of the classes that has withstood a lot of the really kind of darker times in AMSA's history, and to hear them, you know, still be able to look back with, in a more positive light on their time at AMSA was encouraging just to know that we've kind of protected them to some degree through all that rough time, and they're able to still go and, you know, look back fondly at their time here. So also, since the last meeting, teachers in the bargaining unit met and unanimously ratified the new contract. That is a two-year agreement. Feedback has been really positive. Teachers were especially happy to see that paid time off will be able to be banked, or there will be that buyback system in place, and also the addition of the salary steps was really favorably accepted as well or received by teachers. There's a lot of teachers who are going to be benefiting significantly from the 10-year step in particular, and you know, this can, in some cases, honestly be life-changing or talking, you know, thousands of more dollars a year that some teachers are now going to have in their income, and that's just wonderful and a great testament to the work that Dr. Lewis and Ms. Lindsay did in working directly with the contract negotiation committee. And again, just on behalf of the faculty, want to thank them and thank the committee as well for just all the time that they put into working on that. And again, it seemed, sounded like it was a very positive experience, which was a great turnaround from the first few years, which was good. Schedules were distributed this week, so the schedules for next school year. The scheduling Avengers have been working since the end of second term, when students had to turn in their course selection sheets, to, are looking forward to the next year. As usual, you know, they're really focusing on minimizing classroom and building transitions whenever possible, which is greatly appreciated. Obviously, we have some limited space issues, so it's really nice when your day can be confined to the same room or the same hallway or building. In relation to that, tomorrow and Monday, teachers will have the opportunity to meet their students for the first time for the next school year during move-up days. So tomorrow, after the science final, there will be a day one in our schedule, so students will meet their teachers for that day, and then Monday, for the entire half-day, is a day two, so for every other day classes, they'll then be able to meet their teachers for, on both even and odd day, and for some, they'll see them twice. This is a wonderful opportunity, especially for AP classes, to distribute summer work and make sure everyone's kind of on the same page about expectations. It's also really good just to see, you know, what the class composition is going to look like and give students a chance to adjust their schedules as needed as well. So lastly, for the last part of my report, I asked teachers to share successes from the school year that they would like to share with all of you, or plans for their summer or for next year, so that they, you know, just to get a sense of what they're doing. So many teachers are looking forward naturally to spending time with family and friends and recharging after the school year, preparing for new classes, revising old classes. There's also many teachers who will be working second jobs as well for the summer, since they have the time to do that. Dave Peters, who's in the math department, wanted to share that he was able to work more with the iXL program, which is a math computer program that drills different skills that students worked that year, and since we have more Chromebooks available, it's now a lot more easier for teachers, especially math teachers, to use that in the classroom and make use of that program, and the department's exploring different programs and incorporate more technology as a result of how successful this has been. In addition, there are a few middle school math teachers who are going to a professional development workshop this summer that are, that's specifically focused on teaching middle school math, so they look forward to doing that, and Dave and other teachers are exploring the possibility of going to the National Council for Teaching Math, which will be held in Hartford later in the year. And this is a great example of how the professional development budget is used by teachers to be able to go to conferences, collaborate together as a school department, and also with other teachers from other schools. Blair Clarkson, who's a Spanish teacher, wanted to share that his proudest moment was when his seniors did a debate that was mostly in Spanish, which I find totally remarkable, and he's shared that it was a learning experience for both them and himself, that they had never really done this in the Spanish department before, and so it was definitely a risk, but the students worked really hard and they learned a lot from the project. He also had a lot of students who got medals and honorable mentions on the national Spanish exam, including a gold medal, and this summer, he is going to be spending time in Cartagena?
Cartagena.
Oh, thank you. I took French, so we'll just use that as an excuse. And he said, why, he's actually speaking French, going to be teaching French classes next year too, a French film class, so he's planning, Blair Clarkson, so he's planning on doing that. Jess Bowen is attending two summer workshops. One is an AP institute, and the other is related to AP macro, or actually just macroeconomics in general. Her first workshop starts next week, and she's using her 2018 PD budget for that, and then the second, or sorry, 2017, 2018 budget, and then the second one will be paid for with her 2018, 2019 budget, so making, again, great use of the money that, you know, that has so generously been approved for PD here. Chris Brandis is taking two classes at Franklin Pierce University for his master's degree. One is in action research and education and teaching social studies across the curriculum, which is interesting, he's a science teacher and he's required to take that for, I think it's a curriculum-based program. Christine Bennett, who's a math teacher, wanted to share one of her successes, and she said that she teaches an algebra III class, which is the lowest math grade for 10 and 11, or level for 10 and 11, and noted that the students do struggle with some of the key areas of math, but her proudest moment was when her students told her that they actually looked forward to coming to math this year, and so she took that as a big win, which is great. And then lastly, Matt Anderson in the history department is actually right now attending a conference in Milwaukee run by the World History Association, which he'll be able to use in his world history-related classes, or next year, and he's going to different sessions that will be on using primary sources, global architecture, science and history as related disciplines, organizing world history, embodiment through art, rediscovering the Islamic world, and the time map of history, which apparently is some website, so he's really excited about that, and obviously it has a lot of different ways to apply to his teaching practice. So just a little snapshot of what teachers are doing, and again, can't stress enough how great that PD budget is for teachers, because it really can help us all with our practice. And that's it.
Are there any questions for Ms. Murphy? No questions?
Great report.
That's great. Thank you for adding those anecdotes, that's really, it brings it alive.
Yeah.
That's great. Jill, parent update?
So my update's a little shorter. So with regard to parent correspondence, the only questions I've received are still related to the building and the timing, and if we're still working on purchasing 199 in 201, so everyone's just wondering timeline, and it's pretty loosey-goosey that, you know, we just have, we're working hard and doing what we can and still working on it. So those were all the main questions from parents. I want to reiterate, though, graduation was awesome. All the parents I spoke to, which I knew a lot of parents, because my daughter was the 2018 class until she transferred to Mass Academy, so, and she still kept in touch with a lot of the kids, so we went to graduation together, so I got a chance to talk to a lot of parents, and one of the things with the class being so close, they were a smaller class, and the parents were really close, too. The parents, like, all attended each other's graduation parties, and there was a lot of great parent relationships in that class, too. So that was really good. And then I just wanted to report, the last PTO meeting, they had a great presentation from Kate Driver, she's the school counselor, who gave sort of a rundown for parents, especially the 10th and 11th grade parents who are going to start looking at colleges this summer. She gave a great presentation regarding Naviance and all of the financial aid and some of the first steps that parents need to take getting their kids college-ready, and a lot of times, I think it's good because the kids at AMSA are very, they get into the Naviance and they're told, you have to do this yourself, your parents can't do it for you, and then I think at some point, the parents might lose track because they don't necessarily get as involved. They want to give them the space, however, they want to know what's going on, so I think it's a good presentation just to know what their student's going through so that they can possibly jump in if needed. So she did a great job, like, that balance between letting your kid do it themselves and when you should, like, step in and help, so.
That was good. And that's all I had.
Actually, if you don't mind, I just want to put my parent hat on and say last night's step-up night, thank, I want to thank the administration and the staff because it was a wonderful evening, so just as the eighth-grade parents really enjoyed last night's presentation, so thank you. And, oh, one thing I will say, I gotta give one plug. If you watch the video, I would highly recommend you watch the video, if for no other reason, watch the eighth-grade student speaker. I don't want to say he upstaged Dr. Lewis, but he kept right on par with him. He was fabulous. Absolutely fabulous.
That's pretty amazing for a 13-year-old, right? Or 14?
Yeah. No, he was, he was running for president up there, so.
Wow.
Yeah.
That'll be fun. It's so great that these are all videotaped and we get to do these things, like, you know.
Exactly. Because Mr. Finkel is everywhere.
I know, he's everywhere, but like, to watch that spring sports awards, you know, with the tennis kids coming in at the end, I mean, it was just, it was a lot of fun.
Yeah.
So, if you can't be there.
So you don't have to watch the whole thing, but just watch Whewverton, he was fabulous.
Yeah, he was, he was great.
Any questions for Jill? All right. Let's move on then to our ED report.
All right. Jill, thank you for the nice comment about Kate Driver, our director of guidance. She is, she's a world-class director of guidance, she's just absolutely fantastic, and she's a terrific person to work with. So I have a little shorter report tonight than usual, so I begin, we begin, Ellen and I. Greetings and thanks to everybody for coming. You do not, you do not have a copy, and that's intentional, because we want you to pay attention. That's in the report, I don't need to pay attention. You should all have it in Board on Track. So tonight's report contains several quick updates, Ms. Murphy touched on several of those, a couple of ideas, and a very hearty word of thanks. So as everybody knows, summer is about to begin. Our last school day is Tuesday, so we hope that everybody has a fantastic, fun-filled, rejuvenating summer full of Yankee victories. So a couple of updates, so Liz just mentioned the eighth-grade step-up night, a hearty word of congratulations to all of our fantastic eighth graders who participated in the step-up night, and to all the folks who helped organize it, Lynn McCluskey, Ann Richards, Mr. Naraki, Aaron Fuller, who ran the event very, very smoothly, and Darcy Klautman, who's our eighth grade art teacher, who gave a really very moving speech last night, which was absolutely fantastic. And I should have also mentioned Sean Kessler, who's not in my report, but Sean Kessler played the bagpipes at the introduction to the ceremony, and it just filled the whole room. He was absolutely fantastic. So an update, Ms. Murphy mentioned this as well, update on our schedule. So once again, the Avengers have come through for our school, produced a very strong schedule that is ready to go out for our second annual step-up day, starting tomorrow. We have two step-up days, a day one and a day two. Tomorrow will be day one, and Monday will be day two. The Avengers, Padmaja, who is right here, Lino Alvarez, and Monica Benson did absolutely astounding, outstanding work. In addition to Padmaja, Lino, and Monica, our Latin teacher, Mr. Bacala, ex-student and fantastic Latin teacher, also did a great job helping the Avengers. He produced lots of really fantastic reports that are going to save everybody a whole bunch of time. And as Ms. Murphy mentioned, the Avengers created a schedule that does many really great things. They worked incredibly hard, and they did so with a tremendous amount of patience, patience with everybody, patience with the administration. They provide, the schedule that they've produced provides students classes they need. That was always the most important driving priority, minimizes teacher movement between classrooms, balances class sizes, and reduces as much as possible class sizes, and includes optimal breaks between classes. The whole process involved in putting the schedule together was a very, very thoughtful, difficult process, looking at one teacher at a time, one teacher at a time, one teacher at a time. It's really amazing what they did. The Avengers were patient, thoughtful, committed to doing what was best for the whole school for a second year in a row. They drew water from a rock. So thank you very much, Avengers. Thank you, Padmaja. Third, update on our PD and mentoring programs. That was one, Ms. Murphy was nice enough to talk about the PD program. So the PD and mentoring programs are back, will be returning next year after a nice year of experience. The PD team will be a little bit different. It will be the Magnificent Two. Unfortunately, Tony McDonald is moving to Virginia and will not be returning to AMSA. We will definitely miss him. So this year's PD team will be our English department chair, Ms. Waldron, representing humanities, and our science teacher, terrific biology teacher, Kristi Jagowski, will be on our PD team, and the PD team, the Magnificent Two, will be working with our administrative team, working with teachers, gathering feedback to craft what we hope will be a very useful and meaningful in-house PD program for this coming year. And our department chairs and our teachers will be working together as well to promote useful out-of-school PD, examples of which Ms. Murphy just mentioned. Along with PD program, our mentoring program is back as well. Ms. Bowen is returning as the head of the mentoring program. She did a terrific job this year. Ms. Bowen has a wonderful philosophy that she put into place. She headed it in place at the start of the year, and the philosophy is one, less focused on bureaucratic paperwork and much more focused on organic conversation between teachers, day-to-day conversation between teachers. She places a high priority on geographic proximity. Mentors and mentees need to be paired with each other if they're close to each other, either sharing a room or very close room by room, so that you can have a daily conversation. Something doesn't go right in period three, in period four, you go see the person, you have a conversation. So just did a fantastic job with that. Fourth, a fourth update, our, we're gaining experience, we've put all these things into place, and hopefully we've learned a lot as well. Our teacher observation system, which was new this past year, will also be returning. There are a few very minor adjustments. We worked with our department chairs to think about what in the observation form was missing, what could be better, so there were a few minor tweaks. The teachers collectively voted on that as part of their collective bargaining agreement, and it was ratified and approved. The goal of the observation system is to have a observation form and a process that is very open and very collaborative and is focused on teacher growth, and we think that the, the form and the process that we created helped develop that. Another important part of the observation process was department chairs doing out-of-department observations. So all department chairs had to do one, at least one, within their own departments, and then department chairs also did one outside of the departments. And I personally, and I think Ellen feels the same way, I found that to be a really terrific learning process. I did observations in the math department, I did observations in the science department, observations in foreign language, observations in physical education department. It was really rewarding to me to see what other teachers are doing and to see what methods that they have and what ideas that they have, and to, it's, it's learning for both of us, for the person being observed and for the observer as well. So it was a really great, great experience, and that will be returning next year as well. Fifth update, our fifth update concerns ALICE training. So last week, we had an ALICE practice. A big word of thanks to our school safety officer, Matt Anderson, who is in Milwaukee right now. He's probably not at the history PD right now, he's probably watching a Brewers game, which he said he was going to do. So Matt's our safety officer, Mike Naraki, vice principal, and our communications director, Mr. Finkel, really helped organize it and communicate the ALICE drill to everybody. It was a-
What was the acronym for?
Alert, lock.
Lockdown.
Inform.
Counter.
This, what?
Counter.
Counter and-
Evacuate.
Evacuate. Thank you, Ms. Murphy. Yes.
You passed.
Yay.
We, we passed.
It is hard to remember, though.
Yeah.
I always forget a few letters.
So it, it was definitely a success. Most of the classrooms were locked, the kids built obstacles, obstructions in the path of, of the doors, which they were supposed to do. They closed the shades, they turned off the lights. Many kids actually took pride in the obstacles that they built.
Engineering competition.
Absolutely, yes.
Yeah, feedback from the students was it was more fun to barricade than to run away, so.
Let's build the best barricade possible. So there were certainly things that we could work on, and we're looking forward to, we worked very, we had a debrief meeting with the Marlboro Police, and we had a very good meeting, so we're looking forward to improve and constantly get better. They gave us some suggestions, so we'll definitely be doing that next year. We look, look to have at least two drills next year, one in the fall and one in the spring, so safety is really, really important, and, you know, we know that the ALICE drill is a little bit difficult. It's not like a fire drill in the sense that a fire drill, everybody knows what they do, it's a very orderly process. The whole point of the ALICE drill is to say, it's up to you to decide, so it's a little trickier. So we're definitely working on that. A couple of ideas that we have, one idea concerns field trips. We love field trips, we think field trips are really, really important, and foreign travel's really, really important, we're going to talk about that in the history presentation. Field trips enhance learning, enhance our curriculum, but truth be told, there was definitely a concern amongst teachers and department chairs that there were probably too many field trips, and that the field trips took away some important class time, so we're looking to add a bit of balance back to our field trips. In particular, we spoke with our department chairs today about setting up some dates in the calendar, call them blackout dates, where you say, okay, here's where we have MCAS testing window, we have AP testing window, we have final exam testing window, those dates are blacked out, no field trips. So we're working with our department chairs on that. Another idea that's came up, in fact, it came up yesterday in the parking lot, and Tom helped to hatch this idea along with Steve Smith. The second idea has to do with our second core value. The second idea has to do with our second core, our second core value is the pursuit of excellence and part of the pursuit of excellence is embracing the joy and the love of learning. So, how as a school do we embrace and reflect that joy and love of learning? So, as we were in the park, I hate to put you on the spot, Tom, but I thought it was such a great idea. We talked about it with our department chairs today, that why not, why don't we do something like have a symposium night at AMSA where teachers, perhaps students, present research papers and ideas, serious academic ideas. You could have a theme, you could have a topic. The topic we were discussing in the parking lot last night was, does life exist beyond Earth? And Tom gave us lots of fantastic information about astronomy and physics, 99% of which I did not know. But it was just great and that's what AMSA is about. We're about ideas, we're about academics and sharing our ideas in the community. So, we shared that idea with our department chairs and they said, why don't we do like a TED Talk night? And we could broadcast a TED Talks, we could invite other schools to come and over time we can build this reputation. AMSA is, it's a school where people go to classes, but it's a school of ideas and those ideas are broadcast out to the community. So, I thought it was a great idea. Department chairs thought it was a great idea, too. So, that's definitely something we're very interested in.
TED Talk.
TED Talk. But we need a new name for it, though. We can't-
TED Junior?
AMSA Talks.
AMSA Talks.
Something. Another idea, and this is just kind of, we're just kind of launching this idea, so, and it needs refinement and a lot of discussion and thought and it's just at the very initial stages of thinking about it. The graduation this year was absolutely fantastic. We're very proud of the class of 2018, but several, so we thank the class of 2018. Several administrators, lots of teachers, I shouldn't say lots, but a few teachers have come to us, talked to us. We shared ideas about, is there a way to tie our core values to how we pick the valedictorian and saladictorian? Traditionally, we do what pretty much nine, I think, what 99% of other schools do. So, our valedictorian and saladictorian have been selected strictly based upon their grade point average. The student with the highest grade point average is the valedictorian, the student with the second highest grade point average is the saladictorian. And nobody, the department chairs, any of the teachers that we've talked with, Ms. Lindsay or I, nobody wants to do away with GPA as a major, 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 major factor in determining the valedictorian and the saladictorian. We're an academic school, we take pride in our academic accomplishment and we've established this pattern that has been in place for many, many years and we wouldn't want to completely change course, particularly with our upcoming seniors next year who've been told it's the GPA GPA. But perhaps in time, over time, we might think of ways to tie our core values, to add particularly the value of integrity to the selection process for a valedictorian and a saladictorian. So, there's a couple of ideas, I'll share two ideas that we've kind of batted around. So, one idea is to say, but why don't we take our top five ranked AMSA seniors based upon GPA? So, in order to get into that group, you have to be in the top five and then this top five could be selected and reviewed by a teacher and administration panel and the panel would review the, and discuss each of the students and reflect upon the question, does that student represent our core values? Does that student in particular represent the value of integrity? And then based upon that discussion, a student would be picked, they have to get into the top five, but then they would be picked, the highest rank would be valedictorian, the second rank would be saladictorian. Another idea, so that's just one idea, another idea which department chairs came up with today, they were very concerned about object, the objectivity of the process and the department chair said, why not establish objective requirements? So, for example, in order, you would still pick by GPA, but you, there are certain things you can never do at AMSA in order to be a valedictorian. So, for example, if you are accused of plagiarism, while a junior, while a senior, perhaps maybe a sophomore, but at some point, if you are convicted of plagiarism, you've lost your chance to become a valedictorian. If you are convicted of bullying, if you're, you've lost your chance to become a valedictorian. Those are certainly clear objective measures that you could put into place so that when we have a valedictorian and a saladictorian, that student represents fantastic academic accomplishment, which we all take a great amount of pride in, and also represents the values that we want at our school, particularly the value of integrity. So, these are just some ideas that we've floated around. We'd love feedback. And then last but not least, a word of thanks, our 13th year is coming to an end on Tuesday and we believe it's been a year of important accomplishments. Ms. Murphy mentioned a couple. The ones that Ms. Lindsay and I have include, in terms of accomplishments, the restoration of trust, the building of a much more positive school climate, strong MCAS and AP scores, a strong collective bargaining agreement, the removal of, removal of all Department of Elementary and Secondary Education restrictions, and the building of a strong special education and EL program. And no one person is responsible for the success. This success, what we've been able to do is the result of all of us, teachers, counselors, administrators, parents and students, and board members, working together to create this moment of opportunity. We've created what is one of our core values, we've created a community. And we have done so by helping each other and by collaborating with each other openly and very thoughtfully. And next year, next year, we will face, we always will, we will face many challenges, challenges concerning our facilities, challenges concerning our ability to live out the true meaning of our mission, to help all students regardless of background, regardless of ability to excel, and challenges around our fundamental need to nourish, maintain, and grow the trust that we have built. We can't never take that trust for granted. I think Rick has often said that trust is fragile and it always will be and it's day-to-day conversations, it's one conversation at a time. Meeting our challenges will not be easy, but if we remember what got us to where we are now and if we commit to our values, integrity, excellence, and community, we will meet our challenges, we will thrive, and we will continue to grow our great school. Go Eagles. Thank you.
Does anyone have any questions?
If I could just have a couple of quick comments. One, I just loved how you read the core values throughout-
Immediately.
What you shared and then-
It's gonna be like a broken record. Ah, there he goes again.
That's what it needs to be, yeah.
But a good book. Stuck on the spark, you like, give it over and over again. The other is, it was just great to hear in so many of the areas like the TED or whatever, AMSA Talks, et cetera, just examples of how AMSA's upright exam, a shine, the top, the lighthouse.
Lighthouse.
Right? Out there, seeing that vision. And then the third thing is, just to share in terms of the valedictorian, salut-
Saladictorian.
Saladictorian.
Saludarian.
Yeah.
Saludarian, yes?
Yeah, saludarian.
Is, some institutions also have a notion of class speaker, so sometimes they have more than one, two, or a few, and you have to fit a certain criteria, as you just mentioned, but then you kind of try out in front of a committee and based on the topic and the ability to deliver, then a few folks are selected from that group. Except, just sharing that comment.
A couple, I mean, years ago, there was a class, there were class speakers.
Oh, here at AMSA?
Yeah, here at AMSA. I know the first graduation I went to when I was on the board, so that would have been six years ago, there was a class speaker who I believe was voted on by his peers.
I see.
So, that's slightly different, right, than what you're talking about? But I don't think for a while there that the saludatorians spoke. I think it just happened, one year there was co-valedictorians and so after that, it always became the top two, but it doesn't have to be the top two, right? I would worry about, so my comment about the valedictorian thing was, I just don't know how other schools do that and does that mean some, like, does that mean something outside? I don't know.
Right.
A lot of schools are getting away with the notion.
All together?
Yeah, quite a few.
Huh.
Not even-
At all?
Having.
No, actually, there was a situation where the father actually rented a billboard because his son was a valedictorian and he wasn't being recognized at the high school graduation.
I remember that, actually, now that you say that.
My college did the, I think it was top 10, so if you had the top 10 GPA, you could apply, do a very similar thing, go in front of a committee, give, you know, a draft speech or whatever. And it was, it was kind of nice because you did definitely feel that the speaker was kind of speaking on the whole of the class and it was all about being well-rounded and so at my graduation, I know someone who had the really good grades, but he was also on the football team and involved in all these extracurriculars and he therefore touched a lot of the different groups of, you know, student population, which made his speech really meaningful. So, that was definitely a plus about that.
I like the idea of taking the top five, but not just as a way to select how are we gonna get to the one and we're gonna rule out these others, is that you've got a group of five that you can actually elevate, so it's an additional honor.
Right.
Is that they were finalists for valedictorian. And so, that's a way to give credit to other, you know, very high achievers and not make it all about who wins it and who doesn't make it.
Right, that's a good point.
Yeah, I've seen, I think my high school did a similar thing, a top 10, got like a different sash or something and that denotes-
It's true, my high school did top 1%.
Yeah.
The something-torianism.
Yeah.
One quick comment, I thought the graduation was, went very well. This class seemed to me to be a lot more animated than prior years. I think I saw one, one that went across the stage on wheelies.
Yeah, that was cute.
Another one that did, was it a flip or backflip?
The flip was amazing.
Okay. And so, I was quite amazed at all of that. I had one or two parents who probably had been to prior graduations because they asked me about in prior years where we had the sort of the wine and cheese afterwards and the opportunity to sort of social fellowship. So, I just wanted to raise that as a question, whether we didn't do that because of budget purposes or from a planning standpoint, we're just-
It was several thousands of dollars.
Okay.
Tens of the, actually, it was like 20,000.
In what?
It was close to 20,000, yeah.
Eighteen thousand.
Wow, that's huge.
And it was, everyone that walked in there was claustrophobic.
Yeah, that I remember, 2016.
Well, that was the bubble, that was the bubble there.
That was a large class that year, yeah. Okay, I thought it went very well.
I did want to echo Rick's comment about the values. I think, we can go back and double check, but I believe since we introduced the core values, every single board meeting, there has been at least one example on how the administration and the students, the schools as a whole has embraced, referred to, or otherwise illustrated that they're living the values, which is exactly what we're looking for. It's not a poster we hang on the wall, it's things that we refer to and we have, every time we have an opportunity. So, thank you for sharing that because it's great to hear that every single, well, it feels like it, we get it every single board meeting.
I assume there will be posters on the wall at some point, right?
Oh, we will, yes, yes. We have our shirts, our staff shirts coming out on the-
We still have to work on our motto, right?
We still have to work on the motto, yeah, exactly.
I think we should do a mural of the lighthouse, too.
A mural of the lighthouse?
Maybe have the art students do it.
Art students, yeah. Super. All right. Any other questions for Dr. Lewis in his role as EB? Because if not, we're gonna turn to Dr. Lewis in his role as History Department Chair and get an update on the History Department.
Awesome. So, don't look at the screen. Look that way, we're gonna have a quick rock and roll quiz here. I'm gonna play a song, see if you can identify the band.
We all saw it.
The name of the-
It shows up.
Yeah, it shows up.
Black Sabbath.
You should have asked me, I would have helped you.
You're gonna unplug the screen.
Yeah, so it's Black Sabbath. Does anybody know the lead singer of Black Sabbath?
Isn't it Oscar?
It is. Does anybody know what era this comes from? Seventies?
Seventies.
Nineteen sixty.
Oh, success.
So, this song is called War Pigs and it is a protest against what?
Vietnam.
Vietnam.
We'll return to that in a second, probably asking, what the heck are we doing? So, we'll get back to that in a second. I just wanted to at least at some point play Black Sabbath.
(laughing).
So, I, some of those friends on my bucket list of things.
The accomplishment.
So, I'm not gonna use the mic, I'll just, if I'm not loud enough, just let me know. So, this presentation that you will see was put together entirely by our team and reflects all of the thoughts that our team has. So, we're gonna cover four things today and as we do, you'll see lots of pictures from some of our trips, that is our trip that we took last year to Europe, that's a World War II trip. So, we're gonna talk about what our goals are as a department and how we seek to meet our goals as a department, two ways in particular. One, we'll talk about the curriculum and what's in our curriculum. And then we'll talk a little bit about the method. Once you have a curriculum, how do you go about teaching that curriculum and implementing that curriculum? And then the last part, we'll talk a little bit about the future of the past, what are some of the things that the History Department and teachers in the History Department are interested in doing. So, a core goal, what is our core goal? So, our core goal is promoting and understanding and appreciation of the past. I think one of the things that we are really proud of as a department is that all of our teachers, we are absolutely positive, we're history geeks, we're history nerds. We love history with a passion. We talk about it, we do it in the summer, we do it in our spare time and we value history tremendously. We live, we sleep it, we breathe it. It's a hobby that we love, it's a hobby that we want to give to our students so that later on in life, they pick it up, they use it, they learn from it. We all believe as well that history is absolutely positively fundamental to help not only AMSA, Massachusetts, but the nation. Benjamin Franklin, a long time ago, after the Constitution was written, Benjamin Franklin was at the Constitutional Convention and when he left the Constitutional Convention, September 17, it was all over. If I can get the story right, correct me if I'm wrong, Ms. Murphy. A woman approached him and said, you know, what have you just done here? And Franklin said something like, we have given you a republic if you can keep it. And the point that Franklin was making was to say that you have a republic, you have a government where the voice of citizens matter, but those citizens need to be informed, they need to have knowledge, they need to be able to make good decisions and that is what history does. History also helps to build understanding between our cultures, something very, very important, has always been very important, certainly very important today, and it really helps, we believe, develop really important skills, finding truth. How do we find truth? We hear lots of discussion today about fake news, well, how do we get to real news? How do we get to facts? Confronting complexity, one of the things that we work a lot on in the History Department is looking at events, very controversial events, from very different points of view, trying to understand why an action occurred, why an event occurred, why people did what they did, and then viewing events from many sides, which is related to the idea of complexity.
Can I ask, what was that building in the background?
That is Napoleon, that is where Napoleon is buried. It's called, what's it called, you know, that's called the-
I wanna say Lausanne Vlead, but I'm not positive. It's at the Military Museum in Paris.
Yeah, Napoleon's tomb is at the base of that building. So, I mean, that, that's a picture there. We were in Cannes, France, just a bit outside of Paris, making our way to Belgium and we were on a bus, making our way and we just, we stopped in Cannes, we had a very nice dinner there and we did not plan it, but there was a medieval castle right in the middle of the town. It just, it was just stunning to see this building older than our own nation right in the middle of the town. Okay, so, how do we do it? So, here is our curriculum. Our curriculum is roughly speaking, it is chronological. So, we begin in grade six with the Ancient and Classical World, Fall of Rome up to 1492, Christopher Columbus in grade seven, and grade, covers world history from 1492 to the French Revolution. And if you look, if you look to the right, a couple of years ago, we retweet, revised our history curriculum so that our units have stories within them. our history curriculum so that our units have stories within them, because we believe in telling a larger picture through a story of an individual or a particular event is really, really useful for students to grab onto it. So, if you look, for example, at Greece, much of the story of Greece is told through the great sparkwood leader, Leonidas, the Athenian naval commander Themistocles, and the Persian emperor Xerxes. The story of Macedon is told through the great story of Alexander the Great. The story of the Roman Republic is told through the great story of Julius Caesar. So, and so forth and so on, as you kind of go through the curriculum, you can see Leonardo da Vinci, Hernando Cortez, the great Spanish compisator, Martin Luther, the author of the Reformation, Elizabeth I, and Peter the Great, Galileo, William the Merry, Louis the Fourteenth, the great Sun King. Grade nine, grade 10, and grade 11. So, grade nine finishes the story of world history. So, grade nine goes from the French Revolution all the way up to the modern era. And again, you can see reference to particularly important characters, Maximilian Robespierre, the author of the French Terror, Karl Marx. We have our kids reading the Communist Manifesto, the story of the Romanov, Stalin, and Mao during the Cold War. So, once we get through grade nine, then the story turns to US history. That, too, is a change from our original curriculum that we made a couple of years ago. We felt that to get through one year of American history, or to get through all of American history in one year was just too difficult to do. So, we broke American history up into two years. And this is fairly consistent with most other Massachusetts high schools. So, grade 10 goes American history through Reconstruction, and grade 11 is American history since Reconstruction. And our electives. So, this year, we had our electives, you can see on the left side there, several AP classes, US History, European, Psychology, Government, Macro, Citizenship 101. That's a new class that we had for this year. Ms. Murphy and Mr. Anderson teach that. We, as a department, decided we really need to emphasize civic, civic education, understanding our basic laws, principles, and institutions and ideas. So, we drew that up. Global Military History and Criminology. Next year, we are continuing almost all of the AP classes, with the exception of AP Psychology, Citizenship 101, and the electives there in yellow, those are all new classes that we'll be offering next year. Titans of History is a course designed to look at some of the great leaders of time and go really, really in-depth on those particular people, be it Julius Caesar, be it good people, bad people, be it Adolf Hitler, be it Franklin Delano Roosevelt. Vitruvian Man, Ms. Walter mentioned that, I think, at the last board meeting. Vitruvian Man is a mixed science, English, and history class, trying something new and very different. So, it's going to be co-taught by Alex, Scott, and I. We're going to teach it together. I will be providing the history part of that class. Alex is going to provide the lit part, and Scott's going to provide the science part. And that's going to be looking at four great scientists, so a challenge for me, Alex learns in science, through time. And Wild West, that is a fantastic course that is taught by Mr. McAdams, having to do with the myths and realities of the Wild West. All right, so that's the curriculum, that's what we have on paper. So, the big question now is, how do we do that? That is a picture there of Piccadilly Square in London. So, how do we go about doing it? So, one of the things that we really emphasize in the History Department is content, 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 content. Content is really, really, really important. It is foundational, it is absolutely fundamental. You can have whatever technique you want, whatever teaching technique, whatever methodology you have, whatever you learn from the school of education, that's fantastic. But if you don't know the content, and if you can't teach the content, students will not learn. You're putting on a show, but a show of no substance. And we really emphasize the importance of having content and having high expectations in our classroom content, it's really important. In addition to that, that's a core value, in addition to that, we really take a lot of pride in the diversity of our teachers and our ability to teach different grade levels. Many of our teachers teach in lower school, they also teach in the high school as well. Ms. Murphy teaches grade six, she also teaches AP, US History. Matt Anderson teaches grade seven, he teaches the high school elective. Eric McAdams teaches grade seven, he teaches US History in grade 11 as well. It creates a tremendous amount of diversity in our staff and the ability to reflect upon the needs of students through time and how they develop and how they grow through time. And that's something that we're very much committed to. Another really important part of how we go about doing what we do is to provide opportunities outside of class for students to engage in the content that we discuss. Ms. Murphy runs a terrific model UN program where students are engaged with many of the topics and affairs of the world. There's a great picture of Ms. Murphy and her team. Is that in Washington?
No, that was in Boston. It was our first overnight conference this year.
Awesome. Ms. Bowen does Quiz Bowl, she does a fantastic job with Quiz Bowl, very, very competitive team. We also seem to have a very rich offering of AP classes, and we like an AP program, AP History program that promotes two things, access to the program. We want to challenge students. We don't want a program where we say, well, you're only going to get in this program if you can get a five. We want a program that permits students access to the program and gives them the opportunity to succeed. We also want an AP program that is successful as well. So, if you look there, these are scores from last year for our European History, Government, Macroeconomics, and US History. You've seen these scores before. We're very proud of these scores. And so, if you look at each of the scores in comparison to, on the left hand, this is the national average for European History, national average for Government, national average for Macroeconomics, national average for US History. And then there's the state average, and you can see where our scores rank in comparison to the nation and the state. And at each of those points, we are significantly higher than both the nation and the state. So, we're very proud of our students and our teachers for accomplishing that. So, another really important thing that we emphasize, so we want after-school opportunities, we want a successful AP program. Whether the rubber really hits the road, we have strong content, we also have the technique. So, technique is very important. Content is fundamental. Technique also, too, is important. And all of us, the entire History Department, believe that it is absolutely fundamental to make history engaging, to break history alive, to make the classroom environment exciting and invigorating. We want our students to come to history class and to really love and embrace history. And we pride ourselves, students who come and say, oh, I love math and science, and we all love math and science. Well, we pride ourselves on getting to say, well, you know, I came to answer the math and science, but I really love history. So, we want to light the torch, so to speak. We want to turn the light and the love of learning on for history. So, how do we do that? We certainly want to build really strong connections with our students. Content is really, really important. The techniques are important. But I think I would argue above everything else is the relationships that we build with our students. We want the classroom environment where students feel respected, they feel cared for, and that they know that our teachers are very interested in helping them and believe that each of them can succeed. And if a teacher has that relationship with a student, they will thrive in the classroom. If there is not, if you don't have that relationship between teachers and students, it's much harder to move a student to success. So, we put a lot of emphasis on that. So, in terms of the techniques that we use, so we talked a little about the curriculum, the AP scores, after-school programs. In terms of techniques, we don't have one technique, we have a variety of techniques. We have a tremendous diversity of techniques. I'll just talk about a couple of the things that you will see in a history class. So, one of the things that you would see in a history class is the Socratic seminars, where students will be in a circle, the teacher usually is on the outside, Ms. Murphy does this, and the students really are engaged with each other, asking each other questions, be it about Caesar, Alexander the Great in grade six. And the teacher is on to the side and has kind of established a framework for the students to ask questions of each other, to really engage the material, be it a primary source document or a particular question. Another thing that we do in our History Department is trials. We have trials of famous leaders, and students are played different parts. They have folks who play the actual person who's on trial, they have a judge, they have a jury, they have lawyers. We've had trials of Hernando Cortez, was Cortez, the great Spanish compisator, guilty of crimes against humanity for the slaughter of the Aztec people? Galileo, was Galileo guilty of blasphemy? So, he's put up on trial. I was just in Mr. Prue's class, Mr. Prue had a historical trial debate concerning the atom bomb, was the use of the atom bomb against Japan in 1945 justified or not? So, that is one technique that we use. We also, and I tend to do this myself, I'm kind of an old-fashioned lecturer, old-fashioned barn burning lecturer, try to make the, I admit it, I'm a lecturer, sometimes that's a bad word, schools, but that's certainly something that I do quite a bit, and certainly try to make it as engaging and interesting and as exciting as possible for students.
It's a difference between a regular lecture and a barn burning.
You have to come and see.
Easy for you to say.
A barn burning lecture is one where you don't want to leave and you want to hear what's coming next. Right? So, it's a story. You're telling a story.
You'll buy a ticket.
With characters, you're telling a plot, you're adding great, interesting details, and the students are riveted and they don't want to go. And they want to see what comes next. That's...
I'm just not familiar with the expression.
Yeah, it's, I think it's a colloquially, colloquially American, and that's probably why. But barn burning tends to be very exciting, i.e., you burn the barn down.
Another thing you'll see in the classes, and this is why we play Black Sabbath, is all of our teachers in classes, whatever period, they will always integrate music into the class. And as you get towards the upper school and grade 11, in particular, lots of rock music, kids love music, they relate to music. And we use the music as a way to set a theme for the class. We also use the music and the lyrics of the music to interpret the meaning of the lyrics. So, in the case of Black Sabbath, the war pigs song is a song of protest from the 1960s. Black Sabbath themselves represent in their clothes, their dress, their manners, a real cultural revolution that took place in America, much of the world, against the staid formalism of the 1950s. So, there's so much to talk about. If you, you play Black Sabbath for the kids, they just eat it up, they love it, and then you engage them, and you bring them to the content and the important part of the story of the 1960s, 1970s. We also, if you come into history classes, you will see the analysis of lots of historical data, the wonderful Dr. Doyle, for example, he has an enormous database on the transatlantic slave trade that students analyze very, very closely. Lots and lots of use of primary source documents in our classrooms, ranging from addresses that Cicero gave during the Roman Republic to Getafe address, Martin Luther King's "I have dreams" speech. And last but not least, we also really try to promote use, design very engaging and interactive projects in each of the grades. So, I'm going to show you a slide here, and you're probably going to look at that and say, what the heck is that? This is a grade six project that is, what you're seeing there is a result or a reflection of a grade six project that our grade, grade six teacher Eli Wright has developed. It's a, it's a, it's called a civilization project, and he has designed it himself. He's done it over a period of about three years. And the point, the big point of the project is students design their own civilization. And you'll see things here like population, trained soldiers, military personnel, natural resources, taxes, iron, whatnot. Students design their own civilization, and they do it in accordance with the civilizations that they're learning about in the classroom. So, if you recall from previous slides, in grade six, students are learning about the first civilizations. They're learning about Mesopotamia, they're learning about Egypt, they're learning about ancient Greece and Rome, and they're learning how civilizations develop, what civilizations need, what are decisions that the king, the emperor of those civilization has to make. So, as they're doing that, Eli incorporates this project. So, they're not only learning about the actual civilizations, they're experiencing it themselves and running their own civilization as well. I've told Eli, we've all encouraged Eli to copyright what he does. I'm just giving you a teen, teen, tiny sliver of what this project is. It's really amazing, and kids just get really excited and engaged in this project. How am I doing that time?
Keep going.
Keep going.
Burn, burn.
It's video time. I'm going to show you two videos. The first video on the left, so we want really, really engaging projects. The first video I'm going to show you, maybe Lucy can, in just a second, click the one on the left. Mr. Prue developed what you'll see in grade nine. What you're going to see is, in lots of classes and throughout the rest of Massachusetts, when students do projects, they will do a project, they'll present it to a class in two minutes, and can oftentimes be quite boring. What Mr. Prue has done, and you'll see this in this quick two-minute clip, is he designs these projects where students work together collectively and collaboratively to research particular topics, all the topics that you will see concern World War I. And he has the students present at the same time, so half the students, I'm not sure exactly, but I think about half the students will present at the same time, the same day, and they will set up stations throughout the classroom. And then the rest of the students are then charged, instead of sitting back passively, saying, oh my God, this is boring, they, Mr. Prue charges them with going about the room, and he has, they fill out questions, they engage the presenter, there's constant feedback between the student and the folks who put together the project. So, Lucy, you want to hit that? So, this is about two minutes. These ones mainly stayed in trenches because they were so bulky and big, just like straight shot, like all out, all, all everything, like heading to the middle. So, the pictures, the point of view of the gun is done. They have port moves, you have...
Yeah, I thought I had a covering that would just bridge off of the corner, it was a binocular, but it was a lawsuit for the weapon, but they would attach it to the door.
The projects here are meant to get away from the standard paper that we usually create in history class, but still embrace like the same sort of research skills, but then create more creative and specialized pieces. They're probably more proud of the standard paper that they made.
It was not newly as powerful, it cannot shoot as, it cannot shoot as far as the gross part of war.
Did you need a protocol? The 1925 treaty between a lot of countries agreed not to test in warfare.
So, what do they do in the auxiliary force?
So, they would like drive influences, they would work as radio mechanics, they would do like telephone operators, I think, before. There would be like medics, they'd...
All right, terrific. Mr. Prue's an absolutely fantastic teacher, and I think you gave a little slice of that right there. The next video, just another quick minute and a half, you, this is a video from Ms. Bowen's Macroeconomics class. And Ms. Bowen is constantly exploring new ways, different ideas to teach classes and to teach Macroeconomics. She knows much more about economics than I do, so I hopefully will give a good explanation She knows much more about economics than I do, so I hopefully will give a good explanation of what you're about to see. So the point of this video is, this was a lesson that Ms. Bowen designed to demonstrate why free trade and not terrorists is really, really important, why free trade grows wealth. And what she did, is she brought all the kids into the cafeteria, so she took them out of the classroom, she brought all the kids into the cafeteria, and she proceeded to divide the kids up into small groups, and you'll see that, and she gave out trinkets to each of the small groups. And she asked the kids to value their particular trinket they got, you know, it could be a pen or a pencil or a sticker or whatnot, and then to start trading within your group and to figure out what you would want for that particular trinket. And then slowly, over the course of the lesson, Ms. Bowen expanded the circle of trade to include the entire class. And at each point, students were asked to value the products that they ended up with. And what happened is that the value of the products that students ended up with over the course of the class increased. So the point was to demonstrate the importance of free trade, and I don't wish to offend anybody politically here, but the...
On the tariff.
Why terrorists usually don't work in global trade. So it was a very engaging lesson, so thank you Lucy, just a quick clip there.
Some of you are going to have awesome prizes. Some of you have less than awesome prizes. Are two of your prizes being over, okay? Prizes not that awesome. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven?
Oh, I was going to say, you said a card.
No! Actually, that's people to party, they have...
I want it written in my own.
My card.
I actually, I have my own card. My own card, and I have my own card.
And so we increased our wealth by allowing free trade from an original score, everybody's value of an eighty-two, up to a total score of one oh seven. So our prizes that we have now are more valuable to us than the prizes that we started out. Things have different values to different people, so even if you went up with the worst odds in life, you might be able to trade for grain split balls.
That's right. And...
I know.
All right, thank you Lucy, appreciate it. Thank you. Another, so we, immersion into the topic is really, really important, and developing very, very engaging lessons is very important. I'll provide you another example of this. In grade seven, you know, our teachers developed these great ideas, and they really put so much time into these ideas. Another example of how we immerse our students in history is what Mr. McAdams and Mr. Anderson do in grade seven. They don't just teach the history of the Middle Ages, they really live it, and they expect the students to live it as well. So Mr. McAdams, in particular, has really worked on developing this. He has, he assigns, so it's almost like a medieval court, he assigns students some, everybody starts at the same level, so they start as pages, then they can advance to squires, they advance to knights. He is the lord, and they do have to refer to him as a lord. And he gives out certificates, which I'm going to show you to students, as they succeed and pass certain requirements. And let me just show you some of what Mr. McAdams does. So these are awards that students receive in Mr. McAdams's class. So here's a student who has been nominated to become a page. And there's a, there's a page, page, a squire! That's a student who's been picked to become a squire. And just these terrific certificates, which students take a tremendous amount of pride in, and there's the knight that you can see there as well. That, by the way, is a picture of the, anybody know the battlefield there?
Gettysburg.
Gettysburg?
Yes, that is correct. So how does one pass through these particular stages? They have, students have to perform extra credit work, they have to conduct themselves well, they have to pass, do, perform a certain number of quests and so forth, and they have to act the part as well. Mr. McAdams passes out a list of mannerisms of the Middle Ages. So as he's walking the hallway, he expects his students to nod, perhaps vouch, or, and the kids, at first, I was talking about it with Mr. McAdams today, he says at first, "Oh my gosh, this is really nuts." But by the end of the year, they just love it, they really embrace it. So it's, you're not only learning about it in the class, but you're just kind of immersed in the era and the topic, and you really just grow to develop a great love. You don't want to leave in no way. So last but not least, another really important way we see, no, I'm way over my time limit, another really important way that we really, really value is immersion through travel. We mentioned that a little bit earlier. So we've been to many places, and we're seeking to continue to go to many places in Massachusetts and around the world. We've gone several times now to the Kennedy Center, Ms. Bowen, that is Ms. Bowen's government class, I believe, there at the Kennedy Center. Kennedy Center has built a full-size replica of the United States Senate, and students go, we spend a day there, and what they do is they actually run you through a vote, a piece of legislation. You play the part of senators, you caucus, you debate, and then you speak in the Senate. It's really cool, and it really immerses you in what the United States Senate does. We've been to the Freedom Trail in Boston, World War II Museum in Dade, if anybody here has not been to the World War II Museum in Dade, should go, it's an amazing, amazing museum. And then really proud of the trip that we took to Europe, 2017 World War II trip, it was a World War II themed trip. It began in England, we crossed the channel, went to France, up to Belgium, and then to Germany. It was incredibly moving experience, it's a great PD experience, I think, for teachers, it's a great experience for students, to be away from family, to be a little bit more independent, to really see what is talked about in class. And there's nothing like, you know, if you're talking about World War II, and you're talking about D-Day, you're talking about crossing the English Channel, there is nothing like being on the beaches of Normandy and looking at the English Channel and dipping your feet into the water of the English Channel and seeing what those soldiers face when they looked in the bunkers and the Nazi guns up on the embankments. And next year, we're really excited, Eli, our grade six teacher, is organizing our next great history trip, which will be a Cold War themed trip, not a World War II themed trip, Cold War themed trip, that will include stops to Warsaw, Berlin, Prague, and Vienna. And there's a couple, a couple more images. This is Bunker Hill, this is Ms. Bartolini, Ms. Bartolini teaches our military history class, these are some photographs of her trip to Bunker Hill. This is a trip to, that's the World War II museum, and this is our flyer for the Cold War trip. All right, last but not least, goals, goals and needs, ideas, things that we're interested in working on. One of our continuing goals is to continue to take pride in our academic nature of our school, the high expectations of our school, all of the history students very much believe how important that is, and to take pride in that, that we are academically oriented school. A couple things we're interested in working on is, as you can see, they're establishing a set of core skills, the English department recently did something similar to this, a set of core skills and content that are necessary for students as they progress from grade six through twelve. We have a curriculum, right, which details very specifically what students learn in grade six, grade seven, grade eight, grade nine. One of the questions we're always confronted, the curriculum is so rich and so deep and goes so far beyond the state curriculum. One of the things that we constantly think about is what is absolutely fundamental to transfer from grade six to grade seven to grade eight to grade nine? Is it that Christopher Columbus first set sail on March 4th? Or is it that Christopher Columbus helped to create the Columbian Exchange? Is it the detail or is it broad a picture? Something that we're working on. We're also working on developing a core set of skills that help students in all classes, and particularly our history classes, that we believe are essential as they progress through the grades. We are also as well interested in the idea of a civics requirement, so not just a civics elective, but a civics requirement. Obviously, when a question like that is raised, it's always what's given up in the process. All of us believe that civics should be, of all things that are taught in school, civics should be the most fundamental thing, helping our students become better citizens. We're also interested in exploring ways to help increase geographic knowledge. Many, many years ago, we had actually a class in geography. We decided, for the sake of time and for the sake of all the different courses that our students take, that we eliminated that class and decided to incorporate geography much more into our history curriculum. And we certainly do that, but I think we collectively feel that we don't do it as well as we should, and that our students have lost a bit of geographic knowledge, which is something that we're concerned about. This is the last but not least. We are looking as well at our final exams, we just finished our final exams, they were very traditional final exams, pen and paper. Our charter, AMPS's charter calls for oral exams, which is a wonderful idea, it's very hard to implement, if you have an oral exam for 130 students, hard to implement. You know, something that we're looking at, maybe you give options, you have students who would like to do an oral exam, that could be possible, pen and paper. We're also looking at perhaps research papers as a substitute for a pen and paper final exam, so it's something that we're all thinking about. Another really important thing that we're thinking about, well, is how, in addition to all the great historical content that is taught in our history classes, how do we help our students become leaders? One of the great lessons of history is the lessons of what good leaders have done, what bad leaders have not done, and perhaps courses on leadership might help our students with that. And then last but not least, the buildings, the buildings, it always comes back to the buildings. Certainly more space would be really, really helpful. All departments need more space. Up to date technology, we have, smart boards are fairly expensive, the new tend to be a little bit dated, so money for smart boards is great. Our resource department room is great, we're constantly trying to find where can we tuck this, where can we tuck that? So space is great, a building is great. That's not news, everybody knows that. And that picture you see there, that is Paris, that is, I can't quite remember where that is outside, but that's a nice dinner that we all had in Paris. So last but not least, just to thank everybody, Matt, Bethany, Jess, Howard, Kevin, Erin, Elizabeth, Brianna, Peter, and Eli, it's a great team to work with. We have absolutely fantastic, dedicated, very passionate history teachers, and they are responsible for putting all this together. So I know I went way over my time limit, my apologies.
Clarifying question. You talk about the need for courses on leadership, is that something that needs to be acquired curriculum or developed, or, so what, what's the ask?
No, I mean, that's not, yeah, that's not really an ask of, yeah, that's not really an ask of the board, that's something we're thinking of ourselves. The elective on Titans of History is an example of a class that could help us do that, because it is a focused look at leaders through history, certainly with an emphasis on what made them great leaders or what made them bad leaders.
I thought this was outstanding, I mean, I actually got excited about history, and I've taken mostly math aside. Barn burning throughout my career. One of the things that struck me, and I'm going to put my diversity hat on, and I think it might have been the ninth grade under US history, and where it mentions transatlantic slave trade, I would love to see right next to it, Black Wall Street. And I don't know if it bears, within our AMPS here, whether we teach that or not, but it's fairly unknown that there's this whole community, I think, I want to say early 1900s, Tulsa, Oklahoma, where you had African Americans who were doctors, lawyers, bankers on their airport. And then, of course, it was burnt down and wiped out, but there's this piece of history there, which started to get shoved under the rug, and I would love for people to know that, especially from a diversity standpoint. So I throw that out, I think you and I might have had a conversation about this four, five years ago. And I would love to see that, maybe next time on a slide, if that's something that somehow fits into the overall curriculum for US history.
Yeah, African-American history is part of, core, integral, central part of American history is absolutely fundamental. The story of African slave trade, the story of the civil rights movement, the story of Reconstruction to Crow laws, and the struggle for free inequalities, really central, we're always looking for new ideas and ways to do that as well.
Yeah, and that piece of it particularly, because it's so unusual, most people would not think that you had back in the early 1900s, African-Americans that had that kind of stature, and this community, thousands that, you know, were such business entrepreneurs, so that's why I think it's, it would be good to have that in someplace.
And I want to make a plug for Trustee Day, because I was able to see Mr. Prue work with his students on some of those projects, and I was so impressed with, I mean, he had the, a diorama of the trenches in World War I, there was this medic manual, like if you were a medic at the hospital, and, you know, what to do, and the triage and all that stuff. And then, I mean, we saw them, the presentations, but when I was in there, I got to see the kids all working on their projects, sort of individually, but he'd walk around, and then if there was a question one student had, it was probably relevant to maybe three or four other projects, and there was collaboration, and, I don't know, it was really interesting to see. So I got to see that on Trustee Day. And then I also saw Ms. Bartolini, she had her kids do a children's book, and they had to tell the story of the Sun King or whoever it was through the eyes of a child, and the projects that the kids were coming up with were great.
Yeah, I, that's...
I can't, yeah, we can't mention them all.
Because I go, you know, I, the department chair, and I go and observe our history teachers, and I feel that it's really the other way around, I'm learning more, so much more from them than I can give to them. You know, I'm a very traditional lecture kind of guy, and I go into all of their classrooms, and they're doing all these amazing things, and I always just sit there, "I've got to do that, I've got to do that, I've got to do that." And I am learning, really, I truly think, much more from them than I can give to them, just doing an amazing job.
So sort of related to Ev's point, how do you deal with, in trying to do a whole history curriculum, in dealing with the fact that the study of history has been so dominated by European men? So whether it's African-Americans in Tulsa, Oklahoma in the 1920s, or, you know, the Arabs' invention of the numeral zero, you know, civilization in Africa, how do you get past that, you know, that prejudice that's so deeply ingrained in the study of history in this country?
I would say two things. One is that the history curriculum that was designed in the Charter was definitely very focused on Europe. And the curriculum that we have now is still, has a strong emphasis on Europe, but we have sought in various places to broaden it out, so that includes more Asian history, more African history. I don't think, and I think we all feel this way, we're still not quite where we should be, so that's one thing I would say. The second thing I would say is that I think all of us really want to confront the difficult topics very head-on and very bluntly, but doing so in a way that permits students to understand the controversy on their own terms. So if we're discussing, for example, the topic of slavery and how different interpretations of slavery in the North, different interpretations of slavery in the South, we want to present the inhumanity of slavery, the brutality of slavery, we also want to push kids, as hard as it is, as anybody's discussing as it is, try to understand perspective of the southerners, what did southerners think about slavery? Why would a southerner do something like that? And to encourage them to come to their own conclusions based upon that. It's difficult to do, but certainly something that we try to do, so they can confront complexity, they can see many different points of view. to understand perspective of the Southerners, what did Southerners think about slavery? Why would a Southerner do something like that? And to encourage them to come to their own conclusions based upon that. It's difficult to do, but certainly something that we try to do so that they can confront complexity, they can see many different points of view, but there is that underlying humanity to all of the controversial topics that we talked about.
Thank you.
Can I add a comment to that, too? I would say that's another plug for professional development. I mean, I know myself, and I know of anyone else who goes to a conference, you go to learn a lot of that, and I think especially with, in history and in the broader academic community, there's such a focus on moving away from that type of history and incorporating more of those voices, and so to be able to go to a workshop and go do archival research. I mean, there's so many great resources right here that you can do and find, you know, the average person, not, you know, the white man in power, but, you know, find like a woman or find, if they're, you know, slave narratives. I mean, there's, there's a lot out there if you look for it. That's where like the resource room could come in really handy, and having some kind of like J-Store subscription and that kind of thing, if we can access more of that, because it's all about what's online, and not everything's there on a simple Google search. So having more scholarly resources could be very helpful.
Yeah, one other small point. Oftentimes in history, we talk about, in our various classes, we talk about memorials, we talk about statues that have been built to great people, and we analyze why those statues were built, what's the rationale for them. So just to take an example from my own class, we looked very recently at a statue that was built in Charleston, South Carolina, to John C. Calhoun. John C. Calhoun was an advocate of slavery. He thought slavery was a great benefit to all of humanity. So Southerners after the Civil War built a statue in his honor, and then they put up the words freedom, justice, and equality in front of the statue. We read what John C. Calhoun wrote about slavery, and then we looked at the statue, and then the question came up, should he have a statue in front of the state capitol in Charleston, South Carolina? Why is that statue built? Should that statue be there? Should it be torn down? And to really push kids to kind of come up with their own complete space, call what they know about the South and John C. Calhoun. I'm like, I'm totally blown away.
So much for the 110%. Any other questions?
Well, first, I'd like to also put in a plug for the trustees day. I enjoyed a couple of the history classes, particularly Bethany Barcoloni's class. Question, I think I've asked one other group, but, you know, if you were given $500,000 grant over five years to improve the history department, what would you do?
Travel the world.
No, really?
Travel the world. Take our history department and travel the world.
The kids, too.
I mean, I can't tell you how, just speaking very personally, how impactful our World War II trip was. I mean, it was impactful to have built a relationship with students. It was impactful building relationships with colleagues and being together. From a history point of view, seeing that firsthand, experiencing that firsthand, walking into the bunkers, when we were on the beaches of Normandy, there were one bunker after another that had been abandoned. Walk into the bunkers from which German soldiers shot U.S., British, and Canadian troops as they were crossing the channel. It just, it moves you like nothing can move you, and it just has this tremendous impact. And you bring that passion back into the classroom. It just lights you up as a history geek, and it lights you up, and you bring that knowledge, being able to see what it's like, being able to see what the cliffs are like, what the water is like, what those bunkers were like, and you bring that back into the classroom. You bring back the knowledge, but you also bring back the passion. So I, we, we're all going on a trip. Get us $500,000, we'll travel the world. We'll have a great time. Don't worry about that.
Thank you.
And we'll watch the TED Talk.
Yes.
The AMSA talk.
Great, thank you.
Great, thank you so much. Okay, so we're a little behind our agenda. Oh, look, I can make up time here on the ED evaluation task force. I'll take 10 seconds. The task force is me and Rick and Liz, and what we have done so far is sent out the surveys to, to all the board members and to the, to Anders' direct reports. So that has gone out. I will be asking everyone to turn them back in by the end of this month, so people got two weeks to fill them out. I'll send out a note after that. And then we will, the three of us will write up that summary memo, and we will provide that summary memo by next board meeting. So that will include, obviously, we'll, we'll get accomplishments from Dr. Lewis himself, the board and direct report evaluations, as well as the survey results. That's what we're going to base things on. So as you fill out your forms, please also focus on areas, suggestions for growth opportunities, and what you'd like to see going forward for next year. Because the part of this is also, it's looking back certainly, but also as we move forward, where are areas and what goals would we like to set for the ED next year? Okay? So with that, we can go on to family and faculty survey results.
So, I'll turn over to Raul in a moment. I think, I think what we wanted to do tonight was folks, give folks a chance to reflect it on the survey, and then start to identify a few key items that could ultimately become actionable. So, Raul, is that your understanding of the objective?
Yes, and I don't have much prepared as far as coming. We did highlight, give some highlights like last time, and we could go over those again if you guys want, but I think, like Mike says, starting to turn this into an action plan. One thing I do want to acknowledge, and we said we're going to have the comments cleansed and shared by now, I have to take full responsibility that I didn't, you know, we discussed about sharing that and splitting it between the task force to do's for today, and if I was the one supposed to be doing the split, and I didn't do it. So we'll, we'll have that, you know, by the next board meeting definitely, and, you know, shortly. But, you know, we can definitely, just looking at the survey itself without the comments could be a good way to start.
Would it be possible to get the comments sometime before that? Because I think we would want to use those as part of the evaluations, too.
Right, no, I say for the board meeting for discussion, but absolutely.
Oh, for discussion, but it'd be a central.
But absolutely, it'd be soon.
Okay, great.
So Pauline, we can do a couple of, we can push the process till we get all the comments and give folks a holistic view of, that gives, nice heart about the comments, and they give context to what people were thinking when they rated the survey. Or we could run a process right now that basically starts with the family survey and then goes to the faculty survey, and as people start to weigh in on some areas that they think would be good actionable areas for the administration to consider.
Well, we did do part of that last time. I'm wondering if what makes sense is to assign very specific homework to people that we can bring back, right? Like to, we've got these surveys, and they were printed out again. We have them from last month also. Maybe there's a way to, because we want to be able to figure out how we make something actionable happen from these, right? And so, maybe there's a way to really identify, we tried to do this last year, right? We tried to identify like two or three things, right? And I, and I think that was somewhat helpful, but it was a little bit all over the place. So maybe we actually should, I, did we do like the top three things last year or the top?
The thing that I think we've solved, I think, is that it was hard to action off of last year because the questions didn't quite understand.
Okay, that's true.
So, so a homework assignment could be, that everybody goes through and they identify just two, two items in each of the survey. Items that really caught your attention, as something that was an area of improvement, could, could be improved further. I think the idea of looking through the comments to reflect on what people were thinking and things like that should inform that. And then at the end of the day, I won't be any worse, so it's probably too, Raul, but send Raul or the team what your two items were, and then I think you, I suspect they'll start to see some similarities and come and say, these are the three or four items that could be worked back, something like that.
Now, could we, would it be helpful to have parameters around like what an item is? Because I, in looking at the, the family survey, it's like I picked three things which could be combined into one.
So I think an item is something that's actionable. So if you can have one action that addresses five things, I guess that's one item.
Okay, all right, great.
But to me, the item is, so for example, one thing that jumps to me, and we talked about this last time, is the lack of understanding, or the answers that we get on the board section, which was a new section, show that there's an opportunity for the board to explain what the board is to, to the school, right? So to me, a communication plan or, or, you know, more specific action on explaining what the board does, and, you know, what our role is, and how people understand that role and leverage that role, that's one I, that can come up with.
Yeah, we refer to them as focus areas, right? That's another.
Yeah, really focus areas, that's a good way to think about it.
Just enough to give Raul a kind of a picture of the two things that caught your attention, and then I think he'll be able to synthesize.
Yeah, let's do two from each of them, right? Two from the family survey and two from the staff survey, and everybody should send that to Raul by June 30th.
If you can kindly send that as a reminder.
Yes, that's next week. That gives you two weekends.
And, and I would close with saying, keep it to two, right? I mean, the discipline of trying to find two things, because there's a lot here.
Right.
But it's okay. Just focus on two things and use that as a way to really narrow down what your priorities were there.
Could I ask, do we anticipate by the time we do that, the, the redacted comments would be available? And the reason I ask, I don't know if it's valuable, if it would be or change the outcomes this year, but I know in previous years, when you read the comments and view these in that light, it, yeah, it gives a lot of context.
Okay, let's say two weeks from the day we receive the comments. So whatever the comments.
The task force can discuss offline, how, when that will be.
I propose that and, well, you know, Rick's comment about a reminder. I would, so I really tried to do my homework this month, and I had a hard time remembering what it was. And I'm, you know, oh, look at that, look at that, I got about 80%. Then it would be very, very helpful if, two weeks before the meeting or a week, at some time, we got a reminder saying, here's the homework. Everyone's expected to do these four things. Would be very helpful.
That's a great idea.
So, so to that point, the following makes sense, that two weeks before the board, next board meeting, we get the minutes to review, and attached to those is the homework reminder.
Yeah, because the minutes, it should be in the minutes. Yeah, that's true.
That'd be great.
That's a great idea.
We're not going to give the action items section.
Exactly.
That's true, there used to be action items section. I think when we moved to Board on Track, that Board on Track doesn't give an easy way to do action items, but, I mean, we can write it down.
We can add it in a second.
Yeah, we can just write it down. Let's write it down.
But just one place, that's where all my homework is, so I know what to do.
Yeah, that's a great idea.
I'd like to, I'd like to lobby for the return of the action item list as well.
Yeah, maybe that makes sense.
So let's add that to the action item list.
So to, so I'm suggesting that, and we can make a trial of this, but at the, at the bottom of the minutes, the last, we'll have two sections, one being board homework, and another would be board action items, something that.
Open action items.
Open action items. I mean, you've had this list in the past.
Yep.
Just return to that format at the bottom of the minutes, or some other documents.
Yep, no, that'd be good. Okay.
So to make sure I get it right this time around, so we have the homework of sending, so that the task, the action item for the task force, the survey task force to redact the comments, and then for the home board to provide the two items for focus, the focus areas, two weeks after those redacted comments are sent out.
Right, if we can get the comments, the redacted comments by, let me see, I would say one, it's already the 21st. If we can get them some, like in, in, in two weeks, maybe, that would be helpful. Because it'll, because then there's only two weeks to sort of write the memo.
I would say, let's shoot for a week.
Okay, yeah.
And then the other homework, the ED evaluation survey, which you already sent out.
Right, exactly, the ED evaluation survey, which is due by June 30th.
So what's the date on the, the redacted comments?
Well, I think they're shooting for a week.
By 6:28.
Yes, I mean, I don't want to speak for the whole task.
Goal of 6:28.
6:28, all right.
Super. And then, so when it comes out, then it's two weeks from when we get, when the board gets the redacted comments.
Just along those action items and homework recommendations, maybe at the end of each of our meetings, we can just run through them really quickly and make sure we didn't miss anything.
Yeah, that's a good idea.
Thank you.
Okay, is everyone clear on the ED evaluation task force and then the family survey results? What's going to happen? Everybody has homework coming out of those. They're going to get our 60 minutes of homework in.
And we'll double check, I mean, you have this in front of you right now, but that you also have, you shouldn't have access to Panorama directly. So if that's not the case, let.
Oh, yeah, if you could, someone could send out that. I'm not sure if we know how to access it.
I'll, I'll check.
Just send out a how to access. So instructions on.
Yeah, because I think that was tied to the comments, like if we either were going to share it without comments, or we were going to redact the comments and then share them.
Oh, yeah, that's right, because it was going to be redacted comments and then shared.
I'll confirm that.
Yeah, okay. The next item on the agenda is actually committee and task force composition. So what I would actually like to propose is that governance, can we do the officer nominations and the trustee nominations now?
Sure.
And then we will move up. So, we do have two trustees leaving us because their terms have expired. Mike Glass is not renewing for another term, and also Ken Estabrook, who is not here. So I would like to read a comment from Ken. Actually, I'd like to ask Mike if you'd like to say anything right now.
Oh, I'll say a couple of quick things, I guess. So first of all, thank you. So Chris is the one who asked me to join the board. So I love this board. I wish I could say I'm not working any harder than anybody else here. I just can't manage it. I just have trouble managing my travel schedule with the board. So if I didn't have that, I would stay as long as you'd let me stay. So, Chris, thank you for letting me join. I think this is, I'll say quickly, you know, this has been an incredible learning experience for me. In my 30 years of HR, I've spent a lot of time with unions. That union negotiation a couple of years ago was a seminal development experience for me. I've never experienced anything like that before. I know more about real estate and real estate law now than I ever did. And I also think, you know, dealing with conflict, I think that more than any team I've ever been on in my whole professional career, this board deals with conflict better than any, any group. I mean, it is just the intent is true here, people speak their minds, it's really healthy, and that has really helped me give a good perspective on how kind of I can operate, and I brought that into my professional and personal life, too. So I'll, I'll say that. I also want to say, so by the way, thanks to you, Pauline, I mean, what a great opportunity, what you've done with this board, the way you've led the school, your big focus on diversity, and what you, what is happening here is really part of your legacy. I, I just want to say quickly, too, and this sounds Pianish, but I'm super proud of my company. You know, we just are about to launch our second high school program that has AMSA students again. We're in the midst of a fairly significant scientific equipment donation to AMSA, which I believe is going to happen. We've had leaders from the company come in and teach in classes here. They matched donations to AMSA. It's, Firma Fisher's a really special company, and I think it's a, it's something to consider as you bring more business people onto the board. I, I think that, there's nothing about everybody here, everybody's spending all their time, stuff like that, but, but we've heard it from parents before about having scientific companies participate on the board, and then really ask that as part of the requirement to get the leaders to come into the classrooms and to donate equipment and do things like that. It's really very doable if you get the right people. And so I think as you replace me and Ken and bring others on the board, I think there's a, there's a missed opportunity to not really actively target scientific companies, and they're GE, we've got some good competitors here, all the, all the pharmaceutical companies. I mean, I came out of Vertex and Shire's here, I mean, there's just so many of them. I think they'd be really lucky to have representation here, so.
No, that's fair.
So thank you for the opportunity. I love working with these guys, so thank you.
Thank you. It's hard to, to emphasize actually how much Mike has done. I, I think most, I mean, everybody knows, or because I think we all are very, very sad to see Mike go. But you reflect back on when you joined and all the different things that have happened. I mean, Mike has been very instrumental in multiple ED hires and transitions, right, and coaching, all of that behind the scenes. and coaching, all of that behind the scenes. In addition to the work that you have done.
I'd just say that, thank you, Mike. In addition to the many great things that you said during board meetings, to me personally, it was the things that you said in between the meeting or when we were out in the hallway that meant a lot to me, who was incredibly inexperienced, didn't know what the heck I was doing, but you offered very kind and heartfelt encouragement and to me personally, that meant a lot.
Thank you. I apologize for not, I should have acknowledged you and Ms. Lindsay, by the way, I mean, because I think that is, so thank you for that, by the way. But that's been an incredible thing to see leadership in a turnaround and be part of that and the decisions that you've made and how you've operated. It's really, it's been amazing to watch, by the way, so I've learned through that as well, so thank you.
But, I mean, also, Mike, Mike personally, just, I'm not sure if anybody knows this, was, in all of these leadership transitions that we had to have, when I had to have the difficult conversations with the EDs and EDs was not fun by any means, Mike was always the one who would then just say, how are you doing? Like, how are you okay with this? And you know, I've never actually really had anyone do that before, maybe because I work in biotech and we're like small companies, everyone's doing everything. Never had anyone actually do that, it was like, wow, that was actually really nice.
From, sorry to keep commenting, but from a teacher perspective too, I just, I think back to that contract negotiation and I just completely thank you for just how sincere you were and it was very clear that, like, you always have the teacher's best and trust at heart and I've really appreciated that voice on the board too.
Thank you. I wish I could have done better than that.
Oh, you did great.
I would just say Mike and I came on the board at the same time.
Yeah, that's right.
And I think back to those early days of doing the, all of the ED searches and, oh my god, in the late hours and so, but it's just been a pleasure working with you.
Yeah, thank you, thank you. No, thank you, it's okay, thank you everybody, I appreciate it. I feel the same way, that's right, thank you.
And I also did want to note, so as you know, Ken has missed the last couple of board meetings. Ken actually had intended to resign about a year ago and I actually kept twisting his arm to stay on longer and longer, so he actually is at the end of his term, but he did send the note to say that he did want to wish the best to, best wishes to all the trustees as they continue the work to ready AMSA to meet the challenges of the future and wants to encourage the board to continue to play a very strong leadership role, especially as the school leadership team continues to mature and as the school continues to evolve its unique identity as a teenager. So it is true, right? We are in the adolescence of the school's organizational development, although I do feel like we're kind of coming out of that period, you know, it's sort of that period when your kids are 13, 14, 15 and they're just intolerable and then now they're, it's like, you know, they're kind of like 16, 17 and they become human again and that's sort of where we are as a school, so it's great to see. So yes, neither Mike nor Ken are continuing on, but then, but we do have one trustee whose term is up who is, has agreed to continue on for a second term.
So I'd like to, so I think as governance, I'd like to cover two things at this point. One is to nominate one more trustee to continue to work with us and then to do the slate of officers, they'll be done individually.
I can before he changes mind.
Yeah, quickly.
So I'd like to make a nomination, make a motion for Ev to continue as a trustee for three more years with the term continuing from July 1st for three years.
Second.
Is that Raul?
Me, Chris.
Okay, all in favor? We don't have to do roll call because Raul's here now, so, all in favor? Okay. Good, yes, motion passes unanimously, yay! Very nice.
Thank you. So now I'd like to do officers individually, the governance committee met and came up the slate, but just do the one at a time, starting, I'd like to nominate Rick Kamal to be chairperson of the board.
I second. Yep, so, all in favor? Yay! So Rick will be taking over his chair starting July 1st. So I would like to make a motion to nominate Roger on behalf of the governance committee as vice chair.
Second.
Rick, Rick, all in favor? All right. Good.
So for secretary, I'd like to nominate Raul to continue in the role as secretary, he's done a great job and really stabilized the office.
Second.
That was Liz.
Second, yep.
Okay, all in favor? Motion also passing unanimously. Great. I'd just like to make clear also, all these officers, these are two-year terms, so these are from July 1st, 2018 until June 30th, 2020.
Yes, and finally, I'd like to, another officer to step forward and continue to stabilize an office, I'd like to nominate Lucy as the, or the governance committee, as speaker of the governance committee, I'd like to nominate Lucy as the treasurer for the board.
Second.
All in favor? Super, motion passing. Do we have our new slate of officers?
Pass the baton back to you then.
Okay, so with that, I would like to actually now take this opportunity to talk about the committee and task force composition since we know what we have going forward. So committees need to be sort of reassigned every year, so in your board pockets, and I had sent this out two days ago, this is sort of what the draft is, because it's basically on what it is now. In the committee, of course, Kristen can't officially be appointed yet because she is not, she's pending disapproval, but she would be joining the finance and audit committee. Did everyone have a chance to look at this and is this, does this reflect your understanding of sort of the committees that you would be serving on? Everybody should be on one committee, at least.
I had a couple of comments.
Yeah, I'm not supposed to be on the finance committee, I don't know how I ended up on there. It's probably old, because I actually resigned from the finance committee. I was like, everyone should only have one committee.
Yeah, you've got two.
Yeah, I've got two. Yes, Chris, what do you?
So I think that perhaps right now is not the moment, but fairly soon, is that with the role that development is going to play, we need more than two trustees on the development committee. And I really like what you did with the task forces, listing, doing the line and underneath it, non-trustee volunteers in the task force.
Okay.
So I think we should try and do that, like we have, actually, I'm not sure, so I've considered Mark Fiala a member of the committee.
Okay, yeah, that's true. Well, we have a staff member for every committee. There's sort of a staff member.
So he's staffing the committee, he's not a member of it?
No, he can.
Well, no, he can be a member, I mean, Sarah's a member of governance.
Oh, okay, yeah. Then I think just to, it would be good to list that, and again, going forward, I think, as we're trying to build our base and all of that, to record and to display that we're involving more people.
That's actually a very good idea.
In leadership of the organization.
Yeah, I think that's a good idea.
Yeah, I think we could, we could amend, so the purpose of this document is to, is just to record the trustee membership.
Right, it's because I'm supposed to nominate all the trustees.
Because we need to nominate all these, but I think on the same page where we display this on the website, that we should have a list of all the committee members.
That's a great idea.
Per committee and that you as the chair of the committee have the ability to nominate non-trustee members to the committee.
I think that's right. Okay, well, I'm going to just then appoint everyone to these committees with the exception of me, I'm taking myself off finance committee on this little X, I don't know why it's on there, it's just residual, but then what I will do is, I'll ask, so here's some homework, if the committee chairs could please send me, by June 30th again, because I'll update this as of July 1st, who else is on your committees? And then I'll update this list. And of course, the committee, the committee membership is on an annual basis, so it's year by year, so you can also, as, you know, we can get this updated as we have people join throughout the year as well.
So we can accept members during the year?
Yeah, we can accept members. And committee chair, non-trustee committee members can be appointed by the committee chair. So the committee chairs are on two-year cycles off from officer chair, so we're not re-electing any committee chair, so the committee chairs are all as they're at one tier.
I'd like to make one suggestion for the executive committee.
Okay.
Currently, we have the chair, vice chair, treasurer, secretary as the four, but four is a very awkward number for quorum.
Okay.
So I'd like to suggest, I'll start, I would like to suggest that starting June 1st, July 1st, that you would, or that yourself would continue on as an executive committee member given as five.
It's actually not a bad idea.
Because you've got, you've got all the legacy knowledge and it gives us, and it gives us five people, so we only have to get three of the people in one place.
That's true. That is the difficulty with the, with the executive committee.
Because the executive committee has to, in order to meet quorum, we have to get three, we have to get three people physically in a meeting.
Yeah, that's true and that's always difficult.
So I think having the immediate past chair automatically on that committee is a great thing, not just Pauline's.
Right, the immediate past chair in general, I think.
Yeah, I think that would make, makes a great fifth person in addition to the officer corps.
Yeah, should we look at our bylaws? Did you take a look at them?
You can be up to eight people.
On the executive committee?
On the executive committee by our bylaws.
And so, and we can just determine who those people are?
I need to read them in detail to see whether there's a vote or not, but I believe it is controlled by the, my, the executive committee falls under the same rules as other committees. I can.
So I can just appoint myself?
I think you would technically for this year would appoint, point me, because I'm not on the executive committee until.
No, but July 1st.
Or that.
Right, it used to be for July 1st.
Starting July 1st.
Why don't we take a vote just in case?
Yeah, we can take a vote and that way there's leave no doubt.
I think that's.
Do the executive committee need to show up here as a member of the committee?
It hasn't in the past because the executive committee has automatically been the four officers, but I think the proposal would be that the executive committee be the four officers plus the immediate past chair.
Makes sense. So I'd like to make a motion for such.
Okay, all in favor? Okay. All right. So that's the committees. The task forces, so task forces are just up to the chair's discretion. So the facilities task force, I would suggest just keeping that as is. I wanted to actually, and the ED evaluation task force is actually ongoing, I believe that it's fine now to disband the collective bargaining task force because we are not going to need that for another year and a half, right? So unless there's any objections there, I will disband the collective bargaining task force. The survey task force is still doing a little bit of work, so I would like to keep that as it is and I think I have the right members there. Is this all right on the survey task force? And can we change this so that Raul's the chair? Because it used to be Mike, but, okay, so then I will make.
Mike is gone.
Yeah, Mike's not on here going forward, so Mike's the chair up until June 30th.
Oh, no.
No, you're not.
You have homework.
You've got homework! You've got homework, but everyone is sending it to Raul. Yeah, so everyone's sending it to Raul, so Raul will be the, will be the chair of that task force. And then I just do want to make a note that the recruiting task force officially is a subcommittee of governance and I personally would actually like to make this be a lot of my time in the next year. I do think we need one more person on the task force. We have a very specific recruiting process where basically the recruiting task force tries to identify, you know, the type of people that we're looking for, everybody should be reaching out, but then you can talk to one of the three tasks, should be three task force members and as we interview people, a lot of the job of the task force members there is to interview sort of the first candidates because we, the first step would be the two of the three recruiting task force members believe that that person should move ahead. So Mike was on our committee, so, so that's why we're losing a person there. So that's not, that's just, I'm throwing it out there, nobody has to respond now, but I would like you to think about that and we'll ask for someone next month.
Pauline, I'd be glad to take that role on.
Or Roger will just step on.
I mean, it's.
You were on it before.
I've been on it before on governance chair, so I think it's a really logical extension of the governance chair to be on that committee.
Okay.
Pauline just is chair.
Yeah.
Now, is facilities, Lisa O'Connor? She a member of that?
Yep.
She is.
She is.
So should she be listed beneath Craig?
Yeah, she should be listed beneath Craig. Lisa, you're on, where's she? She's behind the post. I mean, Lisa practically runs the committee, so. Very good point, yep, she should be listed here. No, I think this is good, she's the, she's the only non.
Craig is non-trustee.
Yeah, Craig is non-trustee. So, yeah. All right, that sounds good, so we'll add those. And that's just me designating those people, so, all right, good. So we've got that to move forward, so now, oh, it's still governance.
So I have Brianna and Jill informing that the teachers and the VTO have nominated Brianna and Jill to continue for another year and I believe the vote, the board will need to vote to accept.
To accept those.
To accept those nominations, we don't, we don't, the board does not choose who is the parent and teacher rep, but we need to vote to recognize it, so I'd like to start to vote to recognize the nomination of Brianna to continue in the role as teacher representative or making motion.
To accept her, right?
Right, I'm making, yeah, making the motion to accept Brianna as, to continue as a trustee.
Second. Liz, no.
Okay, all in favor? Great to have you on for a second year. Not abandoned us like Tom did.
It feels like it takes some time to get a handle.
Yeah, it does.
Yeah, that's part of our philosophy to have it be a two-year, overall a two-year term, two years' length, it truly works out well. So in the same vein, I would like to vote to recognize, accept Jill Schaefer as the parent representative for a second year.
I'll second.
Okay, Brianna second. All in favor? Yay!
I believe that is it for officer and trustee nominations.
Yeah.
The other item that the governance board met this afternoon, right before the meeting to discuss the recommended changes to the student parent handbook, we had a little bit of feedback, so I'm not sure if we can actually vote to accept it at this point because of the amount of feedback, so I'll, I'll report out what we.
Yeah, why don't you report out?
The places that we had feedback on and then we can decide what to do. Page one, you have a document, looks like this, so we had no, no, no feedback on page one. One minor question in, on page two, just a clarification more, that we noticed that this is in regards to failing in summer school, that in order to pass a class, your AMSA's standard is that you need to get 59.5 plus percent of passing grade is above 59.5, but the comment at the very bottom, just above where it says page 33, it says that students must earn a passing grade of 70% or higher to earn credits, so that seemed to be different than the school year standard. That's just a comment for the.
Why the summer school standard?
Why is it 70 and not 60? That's more of a question.
So there's a difference between failing and failing real bad?
No, it's summer school standard versus a school year standard.
Right. Yeah, so, and more, two areas where we had more major feedback, that was just a minor one, we had a question about, top of page three, there's a question about how the National Honor Society fit in with the school and we viewed the, the thought was that the National Honor Society is a separate organization, it's not. It's not, it's not, it's not the same as AMSA. So we were a bit confused on this, you know, that, that a student found, the example, the highlighted line forty-two, a student found guilty, will be required to go before the panel of teachers determining eligibility for National Honor Society. You know, how does that apply to a sixth grader? Or why is it, or even the more basic question, why is it there? One suggestion that had come out was that the National Honor Society would be informed of any violation of the academic dishonesty policy, and then leave the remainder of the issues to the National Honor Society to do the right thing.
It was there because of an issue that we had, and I think.
Yeah, I'm sure it is, but, but it's a National Honor Society decision? It's not an AMSA decision?
That's right, it's a National Honor Society decision.
Right, that's right.
And there was some confusion on that this year, so they're trying to clarify that. But we can go back to that wording.
Okay.
Just to inform the National Honor Society.
Yeah, Roger, could you just repeat that?
Yeah, so the, the suggestion was that the school would inform the National Honor Society when a case of academic dishonesty occurred.
I mean, I realize that the National Honor Society is a subset, you know, subset of teachers at the school, but it's still, it is a separate organization right from the school, so.
Yes, it is.
And, and the final discussion was on the back page. We thought that the wording for the audio and video meetings may be way too broad.
This came straight from the school lawyer.
Yeah, I know, that this is a clarification.
Right, but, but if, well, there's two flags. One is, other me, if you read it, I, I read it as prohibits audio or video recording of a parent-teacher conferences or other meetings, which could include PTO meetings, sports banquet meetings.
Family forum.
Family forum meetings. What, what can?
What other meetings?
What, what is, what is in scope and out of scope?
So you want us to find that a little bit further?
I, I, they thought, the consensus of the committee was that it should be, it appears it really focused on parent-teacher conferences and equivalent meetings.
If the intention was to be meetings in which an individual student was being discussed or something like that, right? So make it clear that it's not intended for.
Public meetings.
Right, public meetings. So I don't know if that's a legal definition of what's a public meeting or not a public.
I think this was more around parent meetings for their, their students.
Right, exactly. That's what I said.
Whether, you know, we're being recorded without knowing that, or whether, you know, you start the meeting and it's, you know, the phone's down on the table, and, you know, you're being recorded, and we, we need notice for that, because then we have to make sure that, that we're recording our side too, so that nothing can change. In the technology, the way it is now, that's why we went to the lawyer to ask for, for the guidance around it.
I mean, I think it just needs to be more specific for what the school really needs, because this is clearly lifted from something else. We shouldn't be having language in our handbook that talks about the district. I mean, it clearly was not customized for us.
Okay, I, we're well taken.
Yeah, and, and the other, more of a question is, especially for five oh, five oh fours and IEP meetings, there are, just check that we are in compliance in regards, that this, that this requirement here does not supersede a IEP or five oh four meeting requirement.
We can do that. He is our, our Student Services Lawyer. He is our five oh four IEP lawyer.
Okay, so just, just check, because the one, the one that stood out to me was, and I'm not up on the most recent, I know that's a continuing thing, is, does, does a parent attending a five oh four meeting need to give you three days' notice if they wish to record?
That, that is in the reg, I know it is for the IEPs that they do need to give us that much.
Okay, so.
So that we can get our own technology set up.
Right, because I, I just wanted to make sure that we're not being more conservative or we're exceeding the rights that, that are given to parents of five oh fours or, or IEP meetings.
I think it's just that it was unclear, so it wasn't evident reading it that that was what was possible or not.
And I have a question, that I don't know if you can discuss. So I was a little bit surprised to read that possession of tobacco was a hanging offense. A hanging offense, so possession of any of these items, yeah, up to and including expulsion.
He's saying that you get expelled, expelled.
It, it, it can be up to. I mean, that's just the way the state like reads.
So other things are like that too? Because it's like, that's, in employment contexts, I mean, up to and including dismissal means, hey, I could fire you for this.
There, there's state laws around bringing tobacco, having tobacco products, eating tobacco products on school grounds, and that's where that comes from.
Wow, okay.
But I know.
It's illegal to have tobacco in a state facility.
Yeah, if you, I would imagine if you're, have the intent to distribute, that would probably bring it up to that, or, I mean, but, I mean, honestly. And there's another thing, oh, and I know, we've talked about this at meetings before, but the state is very strict about suspending and expelling students, so I don't think, we couldn't just be like, oh, it's your first offense, you're out, because the state has its own regulations for that.
So it's interesting that you got language in the, language in the document that says it's completely up to me that if I want to fire you for this, I can just do it, which is what that phrase usually means in employment context.
There's very, very tight laws around any kind of discipline action that can happen. In, in expulsion, we're, we're really talking about bringing a weapon to school with intent to maybe do harm, or it's a dangerous, if, if that's, that's a huge deal, and we would be contacting the lawyers and making sure that nothing like that's ever happened to anyone.
And I know this is kind of a silly comment, but the way it's worded doesn't just apply to students, so. Well, the same one, I mean, the seventy-three is smoking, the highlighted, so. I don't think it warrants any changes, but I'm just saying expulsion seems like a, something that applies to students, but that's for anybody that brings tobacco.
Absolutely. We have teachers who smoke, they have to leave school grounds to smoke.
But this, this is in the context of the student handbook.
Right.
The Student Parent Handbook, so.
Are you saying, are you just saying that the words student should be in here?
No, it's fine, it's okay.
Oh, okay.
And that's all we have?
Okay, so, and then you want to do the proposed board meeting agenda? Oh, the, the board meeting schedule.
So do we?
Oh, that's all for that?
So what do we want, so the question would be? Given, given the questions we have, what, what can we do?
No, we can just table the, that's, those few for next month.
Okay, so the, so the action is to come back with the revised copy for next, next meeting?
Is that for the Governance Committee action?
Yeah, that's Governance Committee.
Yeah, so we'll probably do, well, I'll confer, I'll expect that we'll probably do a half-hour Governance Meeting right before the Board Meeting.
Like we do.
Like we did today. And I've asked if Mike or, or Ellen, if you could join us to help, help understand the details.
It's, because Sarah just turned and said to me, it's difficult when you look at snippets, and you haven't seen all the, you know, the text before and after of what that whole policy is.
Yeah.
So, you know, we can bring that information for you too.
Yeah, that's true.
All right. The final thing from Governance, we're, we'd like to introduce the AMSA Board Meeting Schedule for the twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen season. Basically, we're keeping, keeping the same algorithm that we've, that we've had, that it's on the, on the fourth Thursday unless it was a conflict, is the general scheme. And actually, just here, success, I saw in the email today that because we were getting this out, that we've already scheduled the auditors, we've got time on the auditor's calendar right now, because we got this done now, rather than, we, in the past, we've had special, we've had to call a special meeting of the board, because the auditor's calendar was full on the day that we had planned in the past, so.
Are every meetings, every meeting at the same time, six-thirty? I guess except the Saturday one in January.
Yeah. Yes, the, the plan, the plan was for six-thirty, the plan was for six-thirty Board Meetings.
Same with Governance?
Governance, we were, we were debating or discussing whether we want to do five-thirty or six o'clock. We've been trying to, we've been, we've been having five-thirty Governance Meetings, but it's been a real challenge with traffic for the non-AMSA staff to make it to the Board Meeting, so we don't want to go too far into the evening, because Sarah and other AMSA staff would join us, so the timing on the Governance Committee is TBD. Questions?
Looks good.
I don't think we have to vote, I think these can just, this is, unless this is a major problem for anyone, yeah. If that's the case, then we can just add these into Board on Track.
Show up on the data.
Who puts them on Board on Track, since now I'm taking action items?
Oh.
Secretary.
You can ask Sarah, yeah, just ask Sarah to put them.
Oh, so since we know the dates for every Board Meeting, who puts them on Board on Track?
I can put them.
Okay. I'm just going to capture the action items.
Great. I believe that concludes Governance.
Okay, thank you, Roger. Let's move on to Ed Committee then.
Okay, thank you. So tonight, what we're going to do is, we're actually going to go through the dashboard that the Ed Committee has come up with. Before I start to go through that, I would just like to thank the entire Ed Committee, because it truly was a group effort. Everyone had input, and we all had the opportunity to participate in this. Additionally, this just gives you some context for what went into the dashboard, but I would like to preface the presentation with the following. This is really a work in progress. The idea was, you know, to come up with something that we could use to report out to the Board throughout the year, not just to do it as a one-time. Maybe look at breaking it up into quarterly chunks. And so I'd really like feedback from all of you in terms of, is this the right format? Do we need to change things? Do we, you know, need more information, less information? So really, would like your feedback. Keep in mind that this may change in terms, you know, we're really looking at how we're measuring academic success here, academic excellence, I should say, here at AMSA. And I know that right now, the administration is reviewing with department chairs, really, you know, what we're looking as ways to measure this above and beyond just the test scores. So you'll see, tonight's focus really is on test scores, because that's our, the objective measures we currently have, but we're looking at how we may look at this differently in the future. So just, I want you to keep that in mind. Additionally, just as one example, the MCAS that the tenth graders will be receiving in the future are going to be different, so chances are, we'll have to re-baseline how we look at, at just the results, but we don't know what that's going to look like yet, because we haven't received it from the state. So just want you to keep all of that in mind. Do you want to go to the next, yeah, go ahead.
So.
Yep.
Yeah, can you go back? Yep. So, just fundamentally, it's a lot of sense, which is great. In terms of monitoring academic excellence, as you, you mentioned around, like, kind of, what is that? Do we broaden what the definition of what that might be? We don't have to solve it now, but I wonder, should part of that encompass the notion of college readiness? So there's, you know, certainly test scores and, and traditional academic measures, but are there other measures that can help in that context?
I, I think, and quite honestly, that's something that the Education Committee has grappled with, and that has been something that we have talked about in the past. You know, how do we measure college readiness? Is it a survey that's sent out to the, like, this year's seniors? Next year, would we send out a survey to them? And really, because it's something that I've asked last year's seniors, when, when I saw them, you know, the ones that I, I knew very well, you know, how ready were you? So it would be interesting to get their perspective. It would also be interested, interesting to get the parents' perspective, because I think that, you know, in terms of readiness, that's something that we talked about. Other areas that we talked about were, you know, looking at the participation above and beyond just academics. So whether it's clubs, whether it's the different teams, academic teams, or sports teams, you know, there's, there's a whole lot of different ways to look at this. So I think that that's something that, you know, the Ed Committee will definitely be looking at, along with the administration. As I said, I think they met with the department chairs today, so, and they're, they're also going to be looking for parent feedback as well, and student feedback. So I think that how we're really measuring academic success in the future will be more than just test scores. But as I said, right now, there are only objective measures, so that's what we have to rely on.
Thanks.
Yep. Okay, so, as I mentioned, the, the four areas that we're specifically looking at for this year are the AP scores, SAT scores, MCAS scores, and access. Just, so, as we pull this off, AMSA is the number two school in the state of Massachusetts. When we look at some fun facts as a result, if we look at AP classes, AMSA has sixteen AP classes. There are seven accelerated courses that require AP prerequisites. The class of twenty eighteen has twenty-six AP Scholar Awards and ten National Merit Scholars. Also, just another fun fact about the U.S. News and World Report, they ranked AMSA fifty-first in the country for STEM schools. So again, these rankings are based on state-required tests and how well students were prepared for colleges. And I do need to give credit that I stole this from direct quotes out of a recent article from Ms. Lindsay that she was interviewed for, so I did just want to give credit where credit's due. And again, these are the objective measures that we have, so we'll, we'll be looking at, you know, how they may change over time. Yep. So if we look at the MCAS, we're really looking at achievement as well as growth, and we're considering the subgroup of special education. So that's where special education falls into. As far as SATs go, we're looking at, you know, state, statewide, how we're doing. APs, obviously, it's the percentage of three, a three grade or higher, but it's also the percent of people taking it within the sophomore, junior, and senior class. So we want to make sure that the achievement is high, but we also want to make sure that we're not improving achievement at the risk of denying accessibility. So we want to make sure that there, there's still accessibility to both the AP classes as well as the AP tests.
Just one quick question. Do you know, in, not that the U.S. News World rankings and their meta, methodology should be driving this, but in their determination of rankings, when they look at AP, I'm sure AP scores and AP, does AP participation level also play into a ranking?
I do not know. Do you know the answer to that, Ms. Lindsay? Yeah, I do not know. That's something that we would have to look at. Do you mind just capturing? Yep, thanks.
I believe it does, but.
Yeah.
Liz, do you want questions as you go, or you want to hold?
That's fine, yep.
Could you define, I think I know what it means, but define access?
So access is basically English language learning proficiency. So it's, it's, it's just access, it's the test that they use, and so that's why it's called access.
Oh, it's not the word access?
No, no, it's, it's an acronym. Sorry, I do not have that off the top of my head. But it, it's basically what falls under access is English language learning. But it's basically what falls under access is English language learning.
Oh, that's way confusing.
Yeah.
It is. I didn't know that.
Honestly, it was for me, it wasn't until this week because I originally had special education under there as well.
That was my second question.
Okay. So, and Ms. Lindsay pointed out to me this week in a meeting that special education falls under a subgroup within.
So in the next iteration, I would suggest considering changing that.
Yes.
I look at that and I say, okay, there's all these high academic achievements and access means making them accessible to all the kids.
Right, right. And that's how.
Ninety percent in terms of percentage of students who got a three, I think it was about eighty-five, close to eighty-six percent. And the benchmark is ninety?
Ninety.
Yeah. And that's, I can talk about later, but that was a topic that department chairs had a lot to add to.
And the second comment was, I know we had a discussion before about, are we going to try to subgroup students who, for example, students that joined in ninth grade or students that joined in eighth grade versus a student that joined AMSA at sixth grade and had the whole, benefited from the whole AMSA experience?
In what aspect?
Well, I guess for all of these to see, is there a different experience for an AMSA student that joins AMSA in ninth grade? How do they profile out versus a student that joins AMSA at sixth grade or seventh grade?
Do we have that broken down?
I'm sorry, Pam and I were discussing something else. What were the questions?
So the question is for the different measures that we're looking at, can we identify the students that start in sixth grade and how they perform versus students that join, say, in eighth or ninth grade?
That would actually be very interesting, I think.
Okay. So yes, we can.
So I just wanted to comment, I looked up the U.S. News World Report, how they schedule. They do measure both AP and participation rate. That is something that's in there. So that is in there.
Yeah. The College Board is pushing access very much throughout the nation.
The other thing that they really compare, though, that's very important, which we don't highlight, but I just do want to highlight because it's in their metric, is they put a big emphasis on historically underserved students. So black, Hispanic, low income is a big part of their calculation as well. And how much higher is the school than the state average for historically underserved students?
Okay. So in terms of defining academic excellence, so I will not read the first bullet because I can't do justice, as Dr. Lewis does on a regular basis, reading that. But, you know, I think we're all aware of how it's important to celebrate knowledge and we're children of all backgrounds and abilities will excel in subjects. So that's certainly the most important. And actually, we had, we moved those bullets around because the education committee did believe that that really was the key. As well as students previously considered capable, not capable or underachievers will reach a level of knowledge that is currently considered only reachable by a few gifted and talented students. And also, that the material covered in each core subject will meet or exceed requirements of the AP exams. And I think that, and I defer to Dr. Lewis and Ms. Lindsay, but I do think that that's probably why we see a number of our students who, although they might not take the AP courses, they still take the AP exams because they have that knowledge as a result of being here at AMSA. Okay, next. So in terms of the education committee's findings, if you want to just go to the next page, so we looked at the following dimensions and put them on a risk matrix. And really, what we did is we looked at the MCAS math scores, English scores, and then AP placement tests, SATs. We had the opportunity to have both special education come in and present to the education committee as well as ELL. So we have the findings based on that. In your packet, I have included the risk matrix. So as we go through the details, you can see where that falls. I would ask after this meeting if you would just destroy that because I would not want it taken out of context of what's being said here tonight. Because I do think that there is, although there's one area in the red, I do think that it has a very good story and next year, you'll see it in the green. But the education committee wanted it in the red just for continuous monitoring because it is still such a new area. But if we look at the risk matrix.
Want to see it up here?
Yep, that's it. So you'll see that ELL, which is English language learning, is up there in the red, although that's the one area where we expect to be in the green next year. And you'll see as we go through the details further on down. That's the new area that a year ago, we had no one in this role. We did not have an ELL program. So this was certainly an area of concern. I think that you will see there's a 180 turnaround, but I think that it's just important to note. I think the areas that you see in the yellow are areas where there are, there's room for improvement. And part of the improvement we expect will be because of the ELL program. But also, I think that one of the areas, certainly for the scores in English and reading, the English department, what we saw over time, especially in the years 2015, 2016, is when we lost a significant amount of English teachers. So as a result, there's most likely some suffering, but we don't know that for sure. So that's another area that we'd like to look at. Additionally, I think our areas of math, as you would expect, are, you'll see, are very good. So do you want to keep going?
I'm sorry, Liz, just.
Yep, it's been the most stable.
You know how to interpret that? So this is the risk. What's the event?
So if you go back.
Is the risk of missing the target?
Exactly. So if you look at what the accountability plan, what the expectations are, so, and again, I think what you'll see here is there's room for growth. So I think that's really the key thing. But our achievement has always been high, but there's room for continued growth. I don't think that it's so much an area of concern that we're underperforming. I just think that, you know, we could be higher. And again, this is the danger of just looking at test scores, but again, it's the only measures we currently have. So if you want to just move on?
So can I just go back to the last slide? So when it comes to the MCAS English test, and Liz did say this, you know, one thing to keep in mind is that in the existing accountability plan, it says ninety-eight percent of our students will score advanced or proficient in the English MCAS. We met that goal. Our English MCAS scores this past year, I think, were top two or three amongst all charter schools in the state. The result for our 10th graders in our English MCAS scores are top of the line. When it comes to the AP scores, I think there's one. Why is it in the yellow?
Again, I would say that the reason why we had placed it in the yellow is because of the growth.
Oh, we're getting over the last.
Yeah, so we're going to go into the details. But you'll see that in English specifically, we kind of fell in the middle range and we're stagnant in our growth. And that's really, you know, how the students do year over year compared to students who score similarly.
Okay. I mean, I think it raises questions about what are the end results and what are the goals of the particular tests? So for example, when it comes to the AP test, we discussed that a lot with our department chairs. Liz mentioned that as well. What's the measure? What's our goal? What's our benchmark? What's in the accountability is kind of a flat measure that doesn't have a relationship to other schools, doesn't have a relationship to state, doesn't have a relationship to the nation. So one of the questions that we raised today with department chairs is, is it better to have a flat measure or is it preferable to have a measure where we compare ourselves to the state or to the nation? So if you compare ourselves, for example, to the state, our, I believe the average number of students who got a three in the state was about sixty-nine. Ours was about eighty-six, which is sixteen percent higher than the state. Across the nation, it was the average number of students who got a three across the nation was sixty percent. Ours is eighty-six, twenty-five percent points higher. So what's the goal? Is the goal that we have a flat measure? Is the goal that should we compare ourselves to the state or to the nation? A question that was raised. The department chairs, I think, and Ellen can correct me, were overwhelmingly in support, not of the measures that are in the existing accountability plan, but to have measures that say, okay, how does AMSA do in comparison to the state averages? How does AMSA do in comparison to the national averages? And can we determine what those measures in the accountability plan will be?
Yeah, we have to draft them. We have to change them.
Oh, so we draft them?
We draft them, but they get approved. We'd have to change the accountability plan. So either we change it or we wait for the next charter cycle.
So I think it's, I'm sorry, Liz, I'll shut up right after this. Within the school, we're trying to build a consensus about what all of us teachers, department chairs, believe is a high standard, but a standard that makes sense for all of our departments and for us as a school. Because it's a very controversial topic. What is the goal? How do you measure academic success? How do you measure the joy of learning and whatnot? And in order to get all of us moving in the straight, in the right directions where we can reach these goals, I think it's really important to build consensus. Liz mentioned that at the beginning too about how we're discussing this. Just to make sure that I understand it. So on the current standards, MCAS is there because our achievement is high, but our growth rate is not everything we'd like it to be.
Correct.
In 2016.
Yeah, we did not have the 2017 numbers to compare it to. Yep. Okay. So again, if we look at math, as you can see, we're very high in achievement and we're also very high, we fall into the advancing in the growth. So obviously, year over year, our students continue to grow at a good rate. So if you go to the next slide, this is where we said there was some concern in terms of where we saw the stagnation. And again, these are the 2016 numbers, so keep that in mind. And so one of the things that we looked at, because we knew we had some high turnover in the, within the English department, if you look at that 2015, 2016, that's when we lost six of our English teachers, including the department chair. So again, this is one thing that we want to look at and compare when we start to look at the 2017 and the 2018 numbers.
So how would you maintain growth when you're already at the top?
So growth.
Oh, it's a very specific way they calculate it.
Yeah, it's basically DISC calculates this and it's based on, and let me read this because I will get it messed up, but growth is a statistic that puts the achievement into greater context. So the achievement scores answer one thing, how did a student fare relative to grade level standards in a given year? MCAS student growth adds another layer of understanding, providing a measure of how a student changed from one year to the next relative to other students with similar scores. So basically, comparing them to their peer group in terms of how they scored and then how they grew from one year to the next.
So it's actually the score of all those other people who scored at that percentile?
Right.
That's the cohort. How are they growing relative to those? I mean, I think it's important to keep in mind, these are metrics, so they only, you know, they're snapshots. And I think it's really helpful to have this, you know, attributed, lots of teachers is going to be a big factor, right? There's just no question that that's going to have something to do with it. And so monitoring, you know, the point of this is to monitor what those causes are, if we believe those are the causes.
And then the other thing is, is there was, prior to this past school year, there was no ELL program. So how does that factor in? We don't know. So it will be interesting to see how we do for the next couple of years, although we might not be able to do an exact comparison because if the tests change, we're going to have to sort of rejigger how we look at the test scores if it's not exactly the same. Because then we'll be comparing apples to oranges and that just doesn't make sense. Okay. Do you want to go on to the next one? The next one is the AP test scores. And so I think that, you know, as Dr. Lewis said, if you look at how we compare to the state of Massachusetts in green and how we compare to, you know, the national scores in yellow, we're still far above them. The question is how we compare to our past performance. So if we look at year-over-year changes, yes, things have gone down since 2013. The years in between, when you look at 2014, 2015, 2016, those were those bubble years where we had a higher number of students. So whether it has to do with, you know, fewer students taking the exams, the accessibility has remained fairly constant since 2013, where it's been in the sixty-degree range, sixty percent range in terms of how many, the percentage of students taking the AP classes and the exams. Usually around mid-sixties is where we've seen the accessibility.
And we're not looking at that now?
Well, we really need to look at both.
I mean, it's not on that slide.
No, it's not on the slide. But it was, but I calculated it out for the years, so we would have an idea. So accessibility hasn't gone way up or way down, I think is the key thing, is it's remained fairly constant in the mid-sixty range.
Next.
Yep. So this will give you an idea of how we're doing. And this, what we did for this year is we specifically looked at the AP courses that fall into the required categories. So within the math and science and English as well as history. So these are more the required courses and we took out some of the other areas specifically around foreign language and art. Foreign language because in some areas, there were so few people, I didn't want to post sort of where we were there because it would be unfair. There were so few people taking, it would identify the people who took the tests. But this will give you an idea of how we're doing. You know, sort of as expected, math is very high. We fall off, you know, slightly in science, but not too bad. Again, it varies across the board. And certainly, I think it's the comparison year-over-year is where you start to see a little bit, you know, it ebbs and flows in terms of how we're performing.
What's this metric, average?
This is the AP scores.
It's average.
Average AP scores for the courses.
So this is where actually you would like to see it relative to the national, right? Because I know that the scores are different all for the different exams.
Right. And we did not have them for the specific exams.
And you did average over median?
It was average was what we were given.
Oh, that's an interesting point.
Because median would be a much, would be a better one because all you get, you get one person who turns in a zero.
Yep.
And you're going to call, you're going to really, and where your goal is, you know, your goal is somewhere in the four to five, in the four range.
Do we know if they?
Well, we were just saying, there's also during that time, a change in three of the AP exams.
Yeah.
Yep.
APCS.
APCS changed, AP Bio changed, AP Chem changed, the way that the exams were done changed. The content itself was changed from.
Dramatically in some areas.
Yeah, and then the timings have changed some of the exams. Some of the exams were like, you know, from one hour 30 minutes went to one hour 45, or one hour 45 to 1:30 and 1:15. There were a lot of changes that happened over the span of two or three years.
Okay.
So those kinds of-
Which is good for context.
-footnotes to a chart.
Yes.
And also, there is another context to it, like, you know, being a teacher, I know, there are many students who have taken the test without taking the course with a teacher at AMSA. Some of them are out of AMSA, too. We actually, and that comes under AMSA, because AMSA is the testing center for it.
So this is the testing center report for AMSA?
Some of them, one or two kids who have gone away from here, wanted to take AP, has come here and taken. I know that for a fact.
Yeah, we don't count those, because they code up, they put their old school code in there.
They do? Okay, that I-
Okay.
We don't get a score for certain.
Okay, and then-
Because I have that conversation.
Do you want to just move on? So these are just the-
Some of the others, yeah.
These are for the history. So we have European history, US government and politics, and US history. So these are, as you can see, still very high achieving on the AP side. Okay, so next is the SATs. Now, if you look at the SATs and where AMSA is falling in, it's falling in very high, as you can see, compared to, if you look at the bubbles to the, sorry, I'm gee, I'm, I get my lefts and my rights mixed up. So to the left, those are the scores within the Massachusetts district. And again, these are 2016 scores. So we would like to see how it's falling in. So this was when they still had the writing, although it's no longer a requirement, it's optional. So we'll start to see the scoring differently because they're back to, for when most of us probably took our SATs, when it's 1,600 and not the higher score. So the average in Massachusetts during that time was 1,484. As you can see, AMSA has always fallen into a much higher, higher-than-average SAT.
What does each dot represent for some things? What's an observation? Schools?
It's the score. The dots are the scores.
But it says each symbol represents four.
Each dot could tell the number of schools.
Four schools?
Yeah, four districts, so.
Okay, so there are four districts in 2012-
Equals one dot, yes. They fell into the, so, achieved the same score. As you can see, the, more of the districts sort of fall in the middle, as opposed to on the high end where we are.
So each dot is four districts?
Yes.
Yeah, they're not doing sort of individual dots.
Okay, so next, as you can see, again, on the math, we're much higher than the rest of the districts. And these particular ones go up to six, so just-
So who are those all the way on the right?
All the way on the right?
Yeah.
Lexington, Mass Academy. Mass Academy is really not comparable. It's more like apples and, I don't want to say apples and oranges, maybe, you know, Macintosh and delicious.
Lexington, really?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Lexington is-
And so this is an area for discussion around what can, you know, if, if we feel like we have higher achievement on the SAT side, what can we do, what can we recommend? And so one of the things that we discussed within Ed Committee is SAT prep. And obviously, SAT prep is something that is offered after school, so then you get the conflict with other things that students are participating in, whether it's sports or clubs or, so, and some people choose to go private on the SAT prep and take private classes. And we discussed, you know, do we offer an elective for SAT prep? Is that something? And what do we have to give up in order to offer SAT prep as an elective course during sophomore duty year?
That's a good question. Do we really, do we really need to be?
We don't need to be.
Yeah, exactly. Do we need to achieve higher than we currently are at? I mean, it's not an area where we're failing by any stretch of the imagination. The question is, how much higher do we need to be in order to, you know, achieve the college initiative?
And over time, the credibility of the SAT is going down, right?
Uh, yeah. Yeah. Yeah, a lot of colleges are starting to move away from SATs.
University of Chicago.
And again, I'll just find out, this is, again, we're reporting averages, not medians. So you're, all you, you know, one, one student with a low score will-
Throw the whole thing off.
Will pull you way in, where if you reported a median, it would just, it would shift you a little bit. And same thing for, same thing for a high, well, you're toward the top, so a high score doesn't move you up much, but a low score will pull you down a lot.
So a rule of thumb for these kinds of comparative things is a median is better than mean?
Yeah.
For our purpose.
Yeah, if I can invoke the ghost of Alex Waldron here, you know, I, there's a balance between preparing for tests and a balance between the love of learning. And you could, we have high SAT scores. You could spend a lot of time prepping for a standardized test.
That was another question I asked.
And the time spent on that is time away from deep engagement with literature or whatever the particular topic is, something to-
Yeah, and that's why I said, the investment in offering SAT prep as a, as a, you know, if we offer it as an elective, what do we then lose by adding that elective? And so is it really worthwhile?
Yeah, and I think one of the things that we need to be careful, this is terrific. This is just great, and congratulations on all this work. Now, we have to be careful about, like, going crazy about every item we're not number one in.
Yep, absolutely.
They're not all worth it.
Absolutely. And again, this is why the Ed Committee is concerned about solely focused on test scores. But again, given that we don't have any other objective measures at this time, it's sort of, this is the default. This is all we have, so.
Can I ask, in that context, does it make sense, or one thing that would be very helpful is, could the Ed Committee kind of have a position on some of these topics? So for example, where do we have the balance between doing excellent versus even going beyond that?
Yeah.
And what kind of is our point of view on that? And even when we think about some of, another variation on that same theme is, like, when there are the US News and World Report, various factors that go into ranking our school very highly, what are the ones we think we really should be focusing on and what shouldn't we be focusing on? Having maybe a point of view on that and then-
I think it would be interesting. I think, I think if we're going to especially look at, well, for instance, SATs, I think we're going to, going to have to get the advice of some of these colleges or someone who has that perspective, and maybe have them come in and speak to the Ed Committee next year to help us formulate that. Because to your point, you know, what is the difference between being excellent where we are and then going out, you know, further out? Is it really, how much will we gain in terms of college acceptance? And sort of looking at that? So I think that that's something. Because I think even if we, you know, if you take it from the parent's point of view, I think if you get 10 different parents, you're probably going to have at least five opinions as far as, you know, where we, where we should be in terms of test scores. Okay, so we had special education come in. So Maureen LeBell came in and talked to the group, and we also had Jess Hennessy weigh in. So in terms of the special education department, it's currently rebuilding, both from a staffing as well as a methodology standpoint. They're undergoing a name change, which should be very interesting. They're going to be known as the Learning Services Department going forward. So I think that's more in line with what, what the department truly wants to get out of the future. So I think that that's something that should be a huge win for, for the school. One thing that Jess had pointed out was there's been very low participation in the PAC meetings this year, which goes to the fact that the parents, for the most part, seem to be very happy with how things are going. In addition, there is this rollout of universal design for learning. And so the idea behind this is that the teachers will undergo professional development in the August timeframe around this universal design for learning. So it's really to teach them how to teach different models. So it's not just one way of teaching, but it will apply to a lot of different learners. So the whole idea is if, if students are learning differently, the teachers will know how to teach to those different, and can incorporate it in, and Breanna, you might be able to give a, a better example, but really incorporate it within a single class. So it's not, it's not taking students out of the classroom for learning, but letting them learn differently within the classroom.
Yeah, that's, yeah, it's just really more educating teachers on the different ways in which students learn and how to meet all those different needs. You have some who, you know, a lecture is, they're going to be completely focused all the time, and others who need to move around the room and need to be more engaged, and maybe one skill that they have to work on is group work, and you have to incorporate that, too, instead of really, again, understand all the different styles of learning and including special educator, those who receive services for special education. But also just, you know, what are students naturally like and what natural variations exist?
What's interesting about this, as I look at it and I think, the first three bullets are kind of incremental, and the fourth one is transformative.
Mm-hmm, absolutely. So one of the nice things, and I think that for those of us who've been around for the last several years, the nice thing to see is that right now, this special education department is really taking an active role in how things are done and actively sculpting versus just reacting to whatever's coming out. So really just dealing with, putting fires out, I guess, as they come up. But instead, they're really actively sculpting the plan for special education. So one of the things that Jess did point out, that currently, special education for AMSA, we have 5% of our students fall into the special education category. The average in the core towns is 18%. One thing that we may see is the number of, the percentage of special education students as AMSA gains success in this area, we may see that number increase, that there may be an increasing number. Hopefully, the idea would be is even if we had the number, the percent of students increasing because of the way we're able to teach them, especially that UDL, that we're able to have a lot more success with the special education students. So that's really an area where we, we expect to see success, if we can really improve the way special ed students are taught.
So what, Alex, I was going to ask, what do we make of the delta here? And so then what success will look like is because we're doing UDL and all that stuff, this becomes more attractive to families with-
Yeah, yeah. I mean, because maybe this was not a destination for students that had special needs, but now if we prove that we can teach them well, and, and the, the parents see success, they may see this more as a destination for those students.
So if I could just say two things. One is, to go off of what Liz just said, a commitment to special education is fundamentally reflective of our core values and reflective of our mission statement. And it needs to be a, absolutely a primary emphasis. Second thing I would say is that Maureen LeBell, who's our Special Education Director, has done an absolutely amazing job. When I, Ellen and I began our positions, I can recall almost every single day receiving emails, complaints, concerns, questions about special education and how we were not meeting the needs of these kids. Over the past year, 10 months since Maureen came on, I have received, received zero, which is an amazing testimony to Maureen and her staff and all of their hard work.
The other thing to consider in that 18% number is those are also a lot of students that, although they're still tied to the core town, they may not be educated within the core town's education system. They may be pulled out to separate and specific specialized schools because of the extent of the special needs. So that's just something else to consider. Okay, next, ELL. So this is the area that we originally put in red.
I'm sorry, can I just go back to that?
Yep.
I think it's important in setting expectations as we're going forward, so we want that number to go up. We don't expect it to ever hit.
No, we would never hit 18.
And we wouldn't expect to and wouldn't want to. And I think we need to say that at some point.
Yep.
Well, and we have no control.
Yeah, that is true, too.
Well, we have, we wanted to, I mean, how do we-
Well, the Department of Education does look-
So if we became a school of choice, if we became a school of choice for families with special needs, then that number would go way up. But it'll never go up to 18 because by the nature of disabilities, there are some kids who simply wouldn't be there.
Right.
The Department of Education wants to know that we do advertise and that we do promote our special education program. They also do compare percentage of our kids to surrounding districts, and they note that in all of their-
Yeah, and I want to know that our school is a school of choice for parents of labeled kids who could potentially do it.
Yeah, when, when Jess and I had the conversation about this, and we conversed about it in the Ed Committee, she thought maybe like 8% or 9% might be more realistic because of, you know, when you think about what's, what goes into that 18%, we would just never get there, and we should never get there. But if we, if we got to say more, more like 8% or 9%, that would be a victory.
And the information exists that you could actually pull the-
Mm-hmm, absolutely.
You could calculate that number.
Yep, absolutely.
Can I just throw through it?
Yep.
Just to kind of give you an example of how we cannot control this, and it's all run by the lottery. This sixth grade class that came, was here this year, we had 12, 13 students with plans, with IEP, that's not five oh fours, with IEPs. And this year, the sixth grade class coming in is six. So that's half the number. That's, that's a huge difference, a real change for resources. But on the other hand, we now have 100 504s in the school, and that's a huge increase. So we talked about 55 IEPs, but now we have 100 504 plans, and they have to be implemented, managed, yearly meetings and all that. The teachers have to accommodate for all of the things, the legal document, and that's something that we need to really get going ahead.
So how many 504s equal an IEP?
Pardon me?
I'm not asking you to answer that, but, I said, how many 504s equal an IEP? No, it did, because they're two different things.
They, they are. Typically, you don't have a child with both unless they have, like, maybe they're diabetic and they have special needs, and then they'd have a 504 for accommodations for medications, a meal, food, and have learning disabilities for IEPs. That's typically the issue.
Actually, it's good to note the difference, too. So the IEPs are the individual education plans.
They're direct services.
Yep.
They need a special education teacher. They need other direct services from a counselor. A 504 plan are accommodations for aesthetic modifications or change of curriculum. They are, but it may be extra time on a test, it may be where they're sitting in class, it could be lists of accommodations. And the teachers have to be able to manage those, know what accommodation each child has, make sure they're getting those accommodations. The counselors still have to write those plans, manage the plans, have yearly meetings to review the plans with teachers. And it's, it's a process that's lighter than an IEP, but still very significant and is really taxing on our resources in the school counseling department and for our teachers to manage.
And that, on a UDL note with that idea, when I was an undergrad, I had a professor who said something along the lines of, you know, many of the accommodations you're going to encounter on an IEP or a 504 is something that, you know, a good teacher who is well-versed in UDL is going to be doing anyways, automatically. They're not even going to have to think about it. So that's kind of the goal, too, is that to not make it an extra burden for teachers to have to go and look at their 10 504s and- to have to go and look at their 10 504s and figure out how to incorporate the accommodations, but to just make it an instinct that they're gonna do anyways.
It's ingrained in the way they teach.
Full day of UDL on August 22nd, full day of English.
Just as a time check, we're about an hour open.
Yep, okay. So actually, you can go ahead. So ELL, this is the last area. The only reason why I do, I don't wanna rush too much through it, but I'll go as quick as I can, because this is the area that we said is currently in the red, but really probably the biggest success story because of the work, um, James Fryer and his team have done. So ELL, English Language Learning, this is where we were prior to, to the beginning of this year. So, um, if you look back, there have never been that many students identified as English Language Learners because we weren't identifying them. We weren't testing them, um, we weren't tracking them, and we did not have, um, a plan to educate them differently. So keep going. Um, so again, we were out of compliance, we didn't have, offer the support services, we didn't have any documentation, and we did not have a curriculum. So, um, at the beginning of this year, we hired the ELL consultant, we compil- we compiled the home language survey, which is that HLS, um, for over a thousand students. So basically, all of our students had to be reviewed. Um, we flagged them, I, we, I didn't, but, um, they were flagged for screening, um, so that anyone who indicated that there was another language spoken at home, they were flagged for the testing and they administered the testing, um, at the beginning of this year. And that was done on a Saturday. So this was all done outside of the school day. So at the beginning of the year, when we had 991 students, 400 were identified for, um, for screening. Slightly under that number were actually screened. 10% of our students were identified, and that's slightly above average. A number of students opted out, and we ended up with, um, 40 students, um, receiving ESL services.
Question on the opted out, that's a personal decision?
That was a, a parent decision, yes. Um, so the ESL classes started at the beginning of the second quarter. There were two levels, um, the EL, L1 and L2, and then L3s and L4s. And I believe the ones and twos were required more services, is that correct?
Yes, they get seen every day, she's got-
Yep.
-articles with them every other day in the, incorporated in her reading classes and then Maria saw them on the other.
Okay, and then also during this academic year, um, teachers also went through the training so that they are also, um, teaching English Language Learners so that they've had that test, that training as well. Do you wanna keep going?
Yep.
So our current state, um, is we are fully compliant now with the state of Massachusetts, which obviously is, um, a, a significant, um, accomplishment over the course of the last nine months. Do you wanna keep going? I've got a couple more, just, this is just some information that James gave me this week. So, um, in January, and this will happen every year, so after we've identified, um, the students that need services, in January, they go through the access test to find out where they're at. So of the 100 students that were identified at the beginning of the year, 75% or 75 of them actually scored above the threshold. So they graduated from the English Language Program. So, uh, they've also identified that of the incoming sixth graders, 35 will be screened in August. And so then they'll determine at that time how many will go into, um, either the L1, L2 program or the L3, L4. And then they'll be, um, they'll be retested next January to see where they're at. They've hired a new ESL teacher, so she's joining the team. Um, they've, they're in the process of acquiring a new curriculum that will be used, and, um, the students that did test out will be continued to, will be monitored over the next four years. And if for any reason, they can always go back into the program if they're falling behind. This was just a success story. We, we took the student's name out, but it was interesting to see. So this is basically the, the testing that was done in 2016 and where they are today in 2018, and this is just one individual of where they've gone in two years.
One year, just one year.
So it's, it's obviously very significant, um, that a middle school student could go from, from one, one extreme to the other in such a short period of time. And it's a testament to the, the program that James has put in place and the team he's assembled and the work they're doing.
And the core town average for ELL students was?
Uh, 10, uh, sorry, 9.5%.
9.5%.
And we're at 10. We were at 10 when we went through the testing. Okay, so again, the ed committee did not go through any specific recommendations for right now. We would like to, um, use this or something similar to report out more on a quarterly basis, so determine the different, um, dimensions that we're looking at. We may add some. Again, we would like to look at areas that are not testing-specific, but we would need to come up with objective measures in, in order to add those. Questions, comments, or is everybody's brain a little too fried at this point?
Is dyslexia considered, uh, a special need?
Dyslexia?
Dyslexia is.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
No, he's saying for TGV.
Oh. Thanks, Earl. Appreciate it. I told my daughter to me, too.
I didn't either, so, and clearly I've been looking at it for too long.
Well, thank you. That was very comprehensive. That was actually very useful.
A lot of work.
It would be nice to, to review that more frequently so we don't have to go through as much detail each time.
Yeah, no, and that's the whole idea, is if we could break it up and identify-
Smaller, yeah.
-smaller chunks, when it makes the most sense in terms of quarterly-
Yeah.
-when we would actually take it through. And again, just please destroy your risk matrix, 'cause again, I just, it's in the document, so it'll be posted, but I just wouldn't want it taken out of context. Sorry, what was that?
It's in the recording.
Yeah, yeah.
But in the recording, it's got the context.
Yeah, no, and that's, again, that's fine, but you get the context. I just don't-
You can leave them on your table.
Okay, thanks. Um, all right, so let's move on to Finance and Audit Committee.
Okay, um, so you all have the actual piece of paper, um, in your folders. It's up here as well, but it's kind of, um, hard to see. I'm gonna, um, run through the major items, I think, that, um, probably need to be discussed and, uh, reviewed, um, so we can try to get through this as quickly as possible because we are way behind, uh, schedule, as Rick pointed out. So just to review this, uh, document again and how it works, you have, on the left-hand side, um, we're looking at May 2018 and what the variance is, uh, to the May budget. In the middle is our year-to-date, so last July through May, so this is 11 months. So this is a, this is a pretty good feel of where we're gonna be, um, by the time we close the year. And then the green section is the difference between where are, where we originally budgeted, um, the 2017, 2018 school year and where we are forecasting it today. Um, I'm going to summarize a little bit and then just pop back up. So in general, um, income, we are currently ahead, uh, by about 4% and we expect to finish the year being ahead by 4%. There are a few things there that are, um, causing that. One is tuition is up. Actually, um, they have all pretty much gone up, um, with the exception of the athletic program. Tuition is up based on the latest numbers from DEES. Grants and donations are way up. We have to date, or at, at least as of this report, had, um, had collected $57,000 in the, um, uh, annual giving campaign. And, um, we received in May an $11,000 Title II-A. So we, we're projecting that instead of coming in at $205,000, um, as we had in the budget, that we're gonna come in closer to $253,000 in the grants and donations, uh, category. Also, food services, uh, as a whole for the year, we, we have changed that forecast from 115,000 to 125,000. Uh, we had, uh, an increased number of students, uh, purchasing lunches. And, uh, students, student programs, uh, was up as well, uh, again, because there were more field trips than, uh, we had expected at the beginning of the year. So in total, um, income, again, we expect it to be up about 4% for the year. Uh, in terms of the expenses, I think I'd like to highlight the three major ones that are changing. Um, I believe we've talked about this, uh, in, uh, previous meetings, but the instructional supplies and equipment and services, uh, we've spent more there. That is where we record our, um, special education, uh, expenses, and, uh, we, um, have adjusted that forecast up by about $17,000 to accommodate the needs that we've had this year. Athletics is up and the, the difference there, um, we, we took a pretty deep dive here on athletics to find out, um, why that was up. The, the big change there is that the, the athletics department, um, hired more, uh, coaches, uh, outside the school as opposed to, uh, uh, teachers instead. So the, the athletic cost falls, the, the, the pay for the coaches falls beneath the athletic program line as opposed to if that pay went to the teachers, it would've shown up in the, uh, salary line.
And the amount would've been the same?
Yeah, they all get the same amount.
Yes, yes.
So that's not really-
Well, it's a flip.
Yeah.
So instead of, yes, exactly, yeah. Uh, the other big change in our forecast for the year is facilities. Uh, this is, uh, inclusive of, um, the fees we've paid for architectural, uh, services, which was not in our original plan at the beginning of the year. Um, the other things, a bunch of things have come down, utilities is down, IT costs are down, uh, legal is up, uh, although I believe that, you know, should, will probably, uh, start to balance out now. And depreciation expense is up as well because we now have the, uh, depreciation of the building, um, of the, um, 165, uh, 4th Street Building. Those are the major items here. I'm, uh, happy to go into details on anything else. I'm sorry I didn't actually, uh, scroll down as I was doing this, 'cause I was looking at my paper. Uh, but if you guys have any questions, I'm happy to, um, walk through in more detail. We're gonna, uh, finish, oh, um, one more thing, sorry. Uh, currently, we, we are still on plan, um, to, to be just over, uh, break even for the year. We had originally budgeted that we would be about $17,000 in the plus sign, and we're gonna be about $60,000, um, instead. Uh, the, the big change from the July, July 2017 through May 2018 versus the next month is that we have a lot of accruals we do in that, uh, final month, so we are still expecting to get to that, uh, $60,000, um, surplus for the year.
I have a question about professional development.
Yes.
Stands out as one that we haven't spent, we spent less than budgeted. Is that cost take, I mean, the-
It was, it, um, it was not because things were, um, weren't approved. I don't believe that, um, the, the teachers at the, at the beginning of the year, uh, were using the, uh, professional development as much. I think we also really made sure that we had enough money in there for this, uh, school year. I expect that, uh, a lot of teachers are going to be, uh, doing some professional, uh, development starting in June. I think that number will bump up, and I believe that over the summer, uh, teachers, uh, will be using it a lot more. So I think they'll use more of the professional development that we've put in the plan for the 2018, 2019 school year as opposed to what they've used this year.
We've never reached close to the professional development budget. Every year, there's been a significant output in there, it's just, it's never been used. It's always around this hundred thousand, eighty, hundred thousand.
So it's, it's there, which is a good thing, yeah.
It's out there.
Yep.
It has been a major shift, though, in the way that this administration encourages us to take professional development, though, so I, I wouldn't be surprised if it slowly starts to go up over the years.
Yes, I agree. Any other questions from anyone?
Are you gonna review the balance sheet?
Oh, yes.
It's so exciting, we have a big asset.
Yes, let's review the balance sheet. Okay, in terms of assets, we currently have, um, $6 million in cash and, um, $34,000 in accounts receivable. Other assets are 152,000, um, which brings our total, uh, current assets to just about 6.2 million. We have fixed assets now, which include the building, and, um, other assets there are the, um, security deposits on our buildings, so our total assets are about 11.2 million dollars. Our current liabilities are 929,000, um, for, which, and then our remaining equity is just over $10 million. Any, any questions on the balance sheet?
Is there a breakout in that equity, restricted or unrestricted? Do you know?
Um, I actually don't know.
That's fine.
Yeah, we have.
Uh, Leon is here, though, right?
Yeah, she knows that off the top of her head. She's, yeah, I was gonna say-
That's okay, no, it was, it was curiosity, no, particularly, no reason for me asking that.
I'm sorry, equity is, is net assets. Is that correct?
Yes.
It's the difference between, yes, it's the difference between your, uh, assets and your liabilities, yes.
I think, with the question you're asking, of, of our, of our assets, how many of them are restricted assets? Is that the question you're asking?
Right, equity, if we get a grant, it's a multi-year grant and we, we, but there's, I'm just curious, there's-
It's not a lot, it's not a lot. Okay. Thank you, Lucy.
Well, thank you.
Great. Um, and then we have our Development Committee update.
Okay, I'll try and keep this short. So last month, we met with our two outside consultants from WPI and from the Boston Arts Academy and Dan Moreaski League, and tonight we met and kind of processed the learnings from there. Uh, and where we came out was the important lessons learned that we'd like to move forward with are how do we get started and organized towards a comprehensive development plan and, uh, program here at AMSA? And we think there are a couple of things we need to do. One is get some consulting in to help us actually plan how to get started, because, you know, it doesn't make sense to hire somebody as a staff person at a high level or even to engage a long-term consultant because- a staff person at a high level or even to engage a long-term consultant because quality of those consultants is so variable and getting them matched. Getting someone short-term who can help us over the next three to six months make a plan. I have three qualified vendors in mind and we talked about trying to make a process for, I would probably step back because I know them, but I would help to write the RFP and then we'd have a committee of people who would qualify them. In the meantime, we would invest in development training, kind of development boot camp 101 for Mark Vidal, so that he's not stuck kind of teaching himself how to swim. And that we also would need to do some kind of a development boot camp for this group for the board. And that would be something that we'd be talking to the consultants about. So what we need to do is get organized and started about how we're going to go about this really transformative thing and do a bunch of things along the way, mostly around getting our data straightened out. So we understand what's what, which could, you know, whether you buy database A or database B is not so important right now. It's that we're dealing with the data. So those are the things that we're going forward with. We expect that, that the school will be coming forward with a probably, you know, maybe this will be cheaper than I think, but they'll probably, probably be coming back to us with more budgeted expense for this consulting engagement.
What's happening on alumni development side? What is happening on the alumni development side?
So the alumni development side is moving along very nicely. I should talk about the campaign, too. Is moving along very nicely in terms of lots of stuff going on. So we've got two class, five-year class units done, a third in the works, some like there's, now there's an alumni cross-country organization, the often because the cross-country team being so close to Mark. So there's, so there's lots of stuff going on, kind of like popcorn, which is great. And again, we need to get organized, need to get our data in line, but lots of activity going on. Ditto for corporations. So there are four active corporate partnerships going on where the details have not been worked out, but the intent has been articulated and they are Thermo, Boston Scientific, TJX, and another one, which I'm forgetting. So that's really, you know, pretty cool. And that's a testament to Mark just getting out there.
Yeah.
Getting in front of people. Ellen has gotten very active with the Chamber, the Women in Business thing that she presented at in the last week, last week.
Yeah, I went to a Women in Business leadership luncheon. There was 45 people there. Got to get up and present a little about Amson, give out business cards and got to meet a lot of, a lot of great people, but they've asked me to be on the Chamber advisory board.
And that number, 45 people, is, that's significant. So lots of good activity. We need to get it organized. We need to make it transformative, not incremental. Now, I was very glad to hear that number, Lucy. It surprised me. So that's good news and bad news, right? I mean, it's great the number is that high. It's a little weird. It's surprising me. And so.
The number keeps surprising you.
So the number that Mark reported this evening on the campaign was about 45 to date. So where the 57? I don't know.
No, I think the 57 includes that grant.
Yeah. Did that include the grant, Leana?
Yeah, yeah, that includes.
Okay.
So I think the number.
Forty-six plus 11. So case in point, when we, when we get our act together, we won't be surprising each other like this at meetings. Good news is, we had a really ambitious stretch goal. You know, it was 50. We're over 45. We're going to be a little bit over that by the time we close the books, but good job.
Great.
So, and thank you all for.
I'm very excited about the four corporation, I'm very excited about the four corporation contacts. I think that's the big.
That's key.
That's a really big key.
There are more contacts, but those are people who.
Four things going forward that could really.
Is GE Healthcare?
No.
Yeah, we got.
It might be on the prospect list.
We got to talk to GE Healthcare again. Of course, that parent just graduated, so it's a little like, but still, we're going to get her back in.
Thank you, Chris, for all your help with us.
All right. So that leads us to the end of our open meeting session. So I got to review, right, Board Homework and Action Items. We have all written down. Oh, I saw that. No, I would have mentioned that.
This is new. Board Management is not coming to this state about this. They're going to wait on it. But what I've done is I've given everybody one of these just to make it easy for the auditors. I'm just going to go ahead and then you'll be ahead of me. If you could just put your name at the top and sign at the bottom, I'll fill out the best and just leave it here and I'll take it. And then this is the brand new, the current open meeting.
Oh, this is great.
So just to be sure, truthful, I'm assuming that the other things on the list that are not this are things that we already should have reviewed by now, right?
This is what comes with it. Because I had the same question when I looked at that. This is what you signed when the Board Management sent you the list. And this is all they give you.
So we need to go find these other things.
Because I think this is number three and the law is public, so I guess you can just look up CMR 29 or whatever. So, but I think this is not the first time we've signed something like this. I've already reviewed the law.
This is a typical one.
Right, exactly. Sure, okay.
So we're, we're just name and signature and.
Yeah, that's all you need. I can fill out the rest just to get you out of your.
And just leave it here on the table?
And leave it on the table. And I have you all here, the captive audience.
Yeah, while you have everybody, you may as well have it slip here. Okay. So, thank you, Sarah. So we are going to adjourn to go into executive session. I promise this will be short. This is actually a very short update. So, and we did say we wanted to review Board Homework and Open Action Items. So the Board Homework was the.
Whole Board sent two items for each survey for focus areas. I wrote down ED evaluation. That's what you sent out.
On track, yep.
The committee chairs to send, Pauline, who else is on the committees? And then we have open action items. The survey task will redact the survey comments and send out by next week. And I'll check more for Max's panorama. The Governance Committee will revise the student handbook with the discuss edits prior to the next board meeting for approval. And then Sarah will put the board meetings for 2018, 2019 and board on the track.
Super. That's actually helpful to have all in one to somebody.
Put it in the minutes.
Super. All right. So I'll entertain a motion to adjourn to go into executive session.
Motion to adjourn. Liz, 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 motion. I'll take the second.
And we do need to do roll call. Let's go into executive session.
Yes.
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 Yes. Yes.
Do you want to mention who was joining us in executive session?
And we're also going to invite in Dr. Lewis and Ms. Lindsay, Leana McLaren, Lisa O'Connor, and Kristen Carter.